Here. Councilmember Cruz?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Merrill?
Here.
So, and so Mayor, tonight, on the agenda, there's four items. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation one case, conference with rural property negotiators, uh, rural property negotiations, parcel zero five six dash one zero eight dash zero one five, conference with labor negotiators, um, SPOA, and then threat to public services or facilities in consultation with our, mostly our executive team.
Thank you very much for that gracefully, making me look less awkward. With that, I will start talking. Very public comment.
We are.
Any done? Was public comment? And retire to the conference.
So, we apologize for our tardiness here. It was important, and thank you all for coming. So, with that, I would like to report out from our closed session. We gave instructions to staff, or directions to staff. And with that, I would like to reconvene into open session at five fifteen. So. Mayor Ex officio, would you like to make the pledge of allegiance, please?
I'd be glad to.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure. Problem. Roll call, please.
Mayor Plummer?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Segersstrom?
Here.
Councilmember Cruz?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Merrill?
Here.
Thank you very much, and the clerks' report on agenda posting.
At eleven fifty-two AM on the sixteenth day of September twenty twenty-two, the agenda for the City of Sonora council meeting scheduled for today's date was posted in the window of City Hall for public view.
Thank you very much. So, approval of the agendas next. Is this the appropriate place to pull items, then? I'm sort of new at this. Okay, great. So, the, I wanted to consider item ten and, and separately, in addition to item eleven, I guess, of the consent calendar, and item thirteen, acceptance of the, charging station grant we are going to pull for this evening. The city's not ready yet, so I know that's a disappointment.
So, when are we pulling?
We're pulling, we're pulling item thirteen.
Okay.
And then considering ten separately, and, and that's it.
So, Mayor, you'd mentioned eleven previously, so we're not?
I'm sorry, no, I'm, I'm.
Just, just to?
Yes, after reading without my glasses, I quickly reconsidered. So, just ten, and then pulling item thirteen. Do I need public comment for the, for this? Doug, sir?
Uh, not for this. This is just the approval of the agenda with those, with that one item being pulled in.
Yep.
That one other item being continued to be determined.
Okay, thank you. So, any questions, comments? Nope. So, in that case, moving on. Yes, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the removal of ten, a consideration of removal for ten and removal for thirteen.
Second, I'm sorry. Oh, and approve the agenda, but we need a second, don't we? I'm.
I'll second. Did she approve the agenda as otherwise?
I approve the agenda as otherwise.
Stated, okay.
I'll sa, I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? I. Any opposed? Any abstain, abstaining? No. So, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Presentations. We are going to introduce our Public Works Assistant Raymond Taylor. Ms. Kellogg, looking forward to this, and it's nice to have new staff. Thank you.
He's a little nervous. I promised you that I told him he wouldn't bite.
Oh, well.
It's all good. So, Raymond started with our Public Works Department. Um, Raymond Taylor is his name. Um, and he was hired to fill the Public Works Assistant position that recently that was vacated. Um, he spent most of, most, most of his youth, see, I can't talk either, most of his youth in Sonora, um, but then moved to Fresno, um, where he was, when he was a teenager. He graduated from Edison High School before returning to Sonora. Raymond has a ten-year-old daughter named Samantha, who lives with him here. He worked for several years in landscaping, and prior to, prior to be hired, hired at Public Works, he worked for Wright's Tire. Um, I've talked to some of the other employees that have had the chance to work with him since he's been here, and they really enjoy working with him. They said he, he's a self-initiator, and he's a go-getter, and he works hard. So, we're very pleased to have him and welcome him to the City of Sonora.
You're welcome.
Welcome, Raymond.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Charles.
Yes, okay.
I still need to read.
And you don't have.
Thank you, Ms. Kellogg. So, next, we have the introduction, swearing in an award present. I have no idea. Is that like when mine started yelling at me downstairs?
Yes.
We gotta get rid of these spies on our phones.
I think so. I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Following that interlude, fortunately, our Chief of Police, Chief Vander Wheel is going to come up anyway, swearing in an award presentation for Police Officer Ron Watson. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel. There's no action needed on this item, which is the introduction of our newest police officer, Ron Watson. Ron tests in January of this year and has completed all the requirements to work as a sworn peace officer. Ron graduated from the Stanislaus County Sheriff's Regional Training Academy on August twelfth of twenty twenty-two, and he is currently assigned to a sixteen-week field training program before his release to work as a solo officer. Ron told me he has wanted to become a police officer since the age of four. I wasn't sure about that, but his mom confirmed it. When he was fifteen, he joined the police department as a police explorer, which he said solidified his dream to become a police officer for the City of Sonora. When he turned eighteen, he went to work for the Calaveras County Sheriff's Department as a correctional officer. And as soon as he was old enough, twenty-one years old, he applied for a police officer recruit position with our great city. Ron is originally from the Bay Area, but he and his family moved here when he was five, I guess to pursue his career in law enforcement. Uh, he attended, he attended Curtis Creek Elementary and then Sonora High School, graduating in twenty eighteen. During high school, Ron participated in FFA, and he's also a member of the Sonora High Trap Club, as well as being a Sonora Police Explorer. Uh, Ron wrote that growing up in Sonora, he has learned to love our community and looks forward to giving back to the community that gave him so much. Some of his career goals include Explorer Advisor, School Resource Officer, Public Information Officer, and eventually, can't read that last one.
Chief of Police.
Wasn't sure if that was the title. All right. Uh, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna administer the oath of office to Ron, and then after that, I'll invite Ron's mother Cindy to pin his badge. So, if you could stand about right there facing me. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Ron Watson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And I take this obligation freely.
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties on which I'm about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
Cindy, would you help do the honors? Anyone want to take pictures? Feel free to step forward and take pictures. We are not quite done yet. Uh, before I conclude, we have a distinguished guest present a recognition. Uh, Calaveras County Sheriff Rick DeBasilio.
Well, good afternoon, good evening. I would say Board Chair, but we don't do boards here for City Council. I'm used to board chairs, um, but thank you for having me. Um, I'm very honored to be here. I, I really hate to do this, but these are actually warrant for your arrest. No, as, as Chief said, Mr. Watson was one of my correctional officers right out of gate at eighteen. He did a fantastic job for us. Sorry to lose him, but to my neighboring city, county, I don't have a problem with it so much. Tru owes me lunch. But what I have here is while Mr. Watson worked for us, he did a couple amazing things. This first item, if I can get my fingers to work. This is a life-saving award. Um, while he was working in our jail. Um, these are fairly short, so I'm gonna read it. It says, "On August eleventh, twenty twenty-one, at approximately nine thirty-five in the morning, Correctional Officer, or Correctional Corporal Lacy Riley and Correctional Officer Ron Watson responded to a radio call of an officer needing assistance in the booking area. Upon arrival, they found an inmate was on her back with her eyes rolled and was, um, hyperetic. That means that she was sweating. Uh, the inmate was not responding and had a faint pulse. Uh, Correctional Officer Watson called her an AED, medical bag, and Narcan. He administered Narcan to the unconscious inmate with the assistance of Corporal Riley. Correctional Officer Watson notified main control to summon an ambulance. After medical personnel arrived, Corporal Riley searched inmate's cell and discovered a bag of suspected narcotics, uh, which was secured. Uh, the inmate was transported to the hospital, received treatment, and was later released back to the custody of the jail. Uh, Correctional Officer Riley's quick response and ability to stay calm under these circumstances is commended. She's awarded a letter of commendation, and Correctional Officer Watson's quick response and his ability under these circumstances is commended. It is likely that the inmate overdose would have been fatal without C.O. Watson's recognition and administering of Narcan. C.O. Watson is awarded the life-saving award." This, uh, incident was fentanyl. So, any of you folks that are aware of fentanyl, it takes just a very minute amount to cause a lot of problems and kill people. So, congratulations on that. And the second one, um, is a letter of commendation for Correctional Officer, now, I guess I can just say Officer. To Ron, and it says, "At the time of this incident, Amber was working as a correctional technician, um, on July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, at approximately ten, ten hours. Amber Rojo is one of our correctional technicians, was working in main control. During this time, she was monitoring cameras when she noticed an inmate who appeared to be in distress. Um, Rojo contacted these housing officer post and advised them of the situation. Correctional Officer Ron Watson and Correctional Officer Eric Vaughn responded to assess the inmate. Um, C.O. Watson used his department radio to request medical assistance. Due to his training and experience, he was able to identify the inmate was suffering from a seizure. Uh, C.O. Watson requested the West Housing Officer respond with a first aid and medical bag. The inmate was attended to by the jail nurse and correctional staff as, staff. Once the inmate was determined to be stable, she was moved to the medical unit. Uh, without the attentiveness of Correctional Officer or Correctional Technician Rojo, the incident could have turned out differently. And then with C.O. Watson's training and experience, he was able to summon the appropriate resources and provide the best care for the inmate while waiting for medical personnel to respond. Officer, um, Ronald Watson, or is awarded the letter of commendation. And again, congratulations. Again, um, he's been a, he was a great asset to our county, um, in the corrections field, and I'm sure he's gonna make a fantastic officer for you folks here in the City of Sonora. So, congratulations.
Thank you very much, Sheriff, for coming over and sharing those.
Absolutely.
What a perfect time and auspicious beginning.
Yes. Please.
And I will make a note that, uh, during the academy graduation, he was honored with the True Grit Award. Uh, so, I think the name of that award speaks for itself. He's a hard charger, uh, very dedicated, and, uh, I know we're gonna see good things, so.
And ambitious.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel, Officer Ron Watson.
And it's very apropos that Chief Vander Wheel is still at the front of the room because our next presentation is Know the Risks of Marijuana and Tobacco by our Chief of Police, Tru Vander Wheel. Thank you all for coming.
I guess they're not here for me. All right. Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel, um, no action required on this item either. Um, I'd like to invite Christina and Katie up. So, a little bit, little bit over a year ago, maybe, I was shopping at Safeway and saw an ad for a local dispensary. Um, on the back of my receipt, I got to thinking, uh, what an opportunity to provide an education, uh, educational statement, uh, from, from our city and from the police department. The city had already identified some funds, uh, to be used towards cannabis education. For a while there, I was able to use them, uh, through our School Resource Officer Program. Um, we no longer have a School Resource Officer employed, and I spoke with Chris Gorski, and he said we had a little extra money to, to utilize to put towards this idea. So, uh, we, I reached out to the company who prints the advertisements on the back of the, the register tapes, and we kinda ran over some ideas, uh, kind of came up with a thought to put a QR code to expand on the educational message that we would like to share, because there's so much to it. So, uh, you know, the, the, we got three thousand, a little over three thousand dollars from our local education money for the cannabis, and then, uh, three thousand, close to four thousand dollars we were able to use from our cannabis tax grant that we accepted here at the city. Uh, Lieutenant Hanula was able to, uh, get the grant modification for some unused money that we weren't able to use and had it redirected towards this project. Uh, reached out to our friends at, uh, Public Health. Christina, we've, I've worked with her a lot in the, Christina, she's on this side. Worked with her a lot in the past on, 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 on different, uh, campaigns and programs and projects, and she's always willing to jump in with both feet and, um, really take, take off from there. Uh, so I reached out, um, and we, we kinda came up with an idea for a video, and basically, I pitched my thoughts, and, and when I said I pitched my thoughts, I said, "Here's my thoughts, can you do all the work?" And she said, "Yes, I'll do all the way." So, uh, um, so her and, her and Katie really, really took off with this project. We got a few of our officers involved, and this is a result. I'll have them speak in a little bit, but I thought I'd show the, uh, the educational video first. Um, I think in your packets, you all have the, what's printed on the back of the, uh, receipts for both Safeway and then the upper Save Mart on Mono Way, and also a, a larger, uh, view of the, um, the photo itself, the, the ad itself that has a QR code. Now, right now, there was a, there was a small hiccup. The, the first round of registered tapes that came out, it just went to our website, so you gotta click a second button to actually see the video. Uh, the ones that are being deployed, I think as we speak, and should be, uh, seen on the back of registered tapes effective October, is gonna go straight to this video.
The more calls we go to nowadays, we see juveniles being in possession of vaping materials, tobacco, marijuana. And the more that society is accepting this as a normal behavior, we are finding that juveniles are dabbling in that behavior. Marijuana can be laced with other substances that you don't know about that may have serious or even fatal consequences.
Undisposable vape contains two to three times as much nicotine as one pack of cigarettes.
Nicotine is a type of poison. Never eat it, litter it, or let E-liquids touch your skin. And always make sure that E-liquids have a childproof cap on them.
People who drive under the influence of marijuana have slower reaction times and a harder time reacting to changing conditions, including, uh, vehicles maneuvering around them and traffic signals.
Never drive a motor vehicle three hours after smoking marijuana and six hours after ingesting any marijuana or cannabis products.
So, what we found with juveniles and youth that are using nicotine products and vaping is it affects their composure in school, um, it affects, uh, the level of anxiety that they have. It can increase depression, and we're worried that this is going to extend over a longer period of time that's going to affect them throughout their entire lives.
The more that we see juveniles using recreational marijuana, the more we have concerns about the road that they're going down. Is that gonna lead them into using different substances? Or is it gonna affect the, the way that they act at home? Is it gonna affect the way that they perform at school? It will really affect the rest of their life.
The Sonora Police Department remains dedicated to keeping our community safe.
As you can see, uh, Katie and Christina did an outstanding job putting this together. Uh, I just provided the, the bodies, and then they were willing to, to assist, and maybe some talking points, and they just did the rest and ran with it, like I said. So, these ads, uh, for, for Safeway-Sonora, they touch three thousand one hundred and ninety-six customers a day, and Save Mart, uh, they touch two thousand two hundred and eighty-three customers a day. So, a good way to get that educational message out there. And I'd like to invite Christina and Katie up, uh, if they'd like to say a few words about the project as well.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. Uh, it was really wonderful to be able to collaborate with Sonora Police Department and everyone who participated on this project. Thank you. Accommodating my height there. Um, my name is Katie Johnson. I'm a program specialist at Tuolumne County Public Health, and I work in the Tobacco Control Program, which, just a bit about our program is, our funding source actually comes from the taxes on tobacco products. So, through Proposition Ninety-nine and Proposition Fifty-six in California, a small portion of those tax monies, when cigarettes or vaping products with nicotine are sold, actually trickles back down into local communities throughout California to then prevent, uh, the use of tobacco going forward. So, literally, we're trying to work ourselves out of a job. We hope that someday we will. Um, in the meantime, our program works to help county residents kick tobacco out of their lives and out of their community's shared spaces. We aim to reduce health disparities and prevent tobacco use by educating the public, serving as an active part of our local community and providing technical assistance to businesses and organizations, like we did on this project with this video production. Um, so, just a few things we offer as well as projects like this. Community education, we're always available for presentations, whether it be to parent groups, uh, local organizations, in schools. Um, we provide educational materials and also technical assistance related to tobacco laws, which can be ever-changing in California. Uh, and Christina's gonna talk a little bit more about what we have coming up specifically. Hi, uh, my name's Christina Herrera, Program Supervisor at, at Tuolumne County Public Health Department. Thank you for helping us help with this project. Um, I'm excited to release the blooper reel and to all of the officers who who are subjected to being filmed downtown over and over and over again. So, um, I know it was new for them, and it was new for us, so hopefully this helps get the word out about youth use of tobacco. Um, we partner very closely with SPD. Um, in the future, we do try to help provide data sources and help with grant writing to acquire another School Resource Officer. Um, Katie and I are advocating at the state level to make sure that rural counties are represented when it comes to SRO funding. We have seen these competitive grants go to larger counties and are kind of making it known that rurals need an SRO at all of our high schools, given the rates that we see with our youth. Um, other projects we have coming up that I will probably lure Chief Vander Wheel and his staff into again, our Red Ribbon Week at all of the high schools. Um, we are trying to schedule Red Ribbon Week presentations, which will feature roundtable educational sessions on substance use, mental, youth mental health, um, and bullying. And so, we'll, we'll be scheduling those at the local high schools and tabling at the elementary schools. And there is interest from one of the high schools to do another Parent Education Night on the same topics. Um, and SPD was part of that as well. And it's very nice to have all of these agencies come together and provide these to our schools. While we don't have our School Resource Officer, we're trying to just pitch in kind of where we can. So, um, if you ever, like Katie said, need any more data sources on this topic or any future partnerships that would make Tuolumne County a spoke-free, healthier place, we are always welcome, um, to the Council as a resource to provide that.
Thank you very much. Chief Vander Wheel, I had a question or two if I might put it to you, and that is, on the subject of, it's not exactly cannabis, but drugs and then fentanyl being included in some cannabis products, how much of a problem up here is fentanyl?
It's a big problem. And I imagine, uh, we have close to least statistics right off the top of our heads, right behind me. But, yeah, we're, we're seeing an awful lot of it. Uh, as you know, that, that, uh, our, our agency recently started deploying Narcan. And because of that, because of the risk and, and what we're seeing up here. So, it's, it's a big concern for us. So it's, it's a big concern for us and obviously a major concern for our health department. It's here.
So I've never really been one to shill for our dispensaries. But is it a lot safer buying from a state-run or not run, but controlled sanctioned, yes?
The idea is it's regulated for, for a safer product. And because it is governed by, governed by the state, right? And so, you know, if all the boxes are checked, everything's working the way it should be working. Can't speak for every dispensary in the, in the state. But, you know, there are regulations around safety and safer dispensing, absolutely.
Can I make a quick comment?
Please, I mean, this is an interesting and to some degree vital subject and you know a lot more than I do.
So many people know I was in law enforcement for 15 years, so I like the information that you're referencing. Spot on. But if you could work with that video a little bit and with the, the sound and get the birds down. And you probably already know that.
I was hoping no one would catch it, but I'm sure Christina caught it. But she actually gave me a better version. And I think when I, when I, the version I sent up for, for Crystal Ode, it was a previous version. So that was the second to final draft or next to final draft and it's reworked. So it works great on your cell phone. Go ahead and scan that QR code. It, it sounds great. The bugs are all worked out.
Any other council questions or comments?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the work and information and taking the time to do that. It's very helpful. Thank you very much. Health being the subject, that's a perfect segue to the Blue Zone, Blue Zones Project, Tuolumne County, on an age-friendly community with Christine Conforti. Am I saying your name correctly? Okay. And Tyler Somerset, of course, you're welcome. So this is a great program. A lot of people might not be only half aware of it. And it is a great program that is hopefully going to make us a far more attractive community in which to grow older. And we all hope to achieve that.
All right.
You have the floor.
Thank you for having us, Mayor, members of the council. We appreciate the opportunity to bring this item for your consideration. And, you know, dovetailing off your comments, Mayor, love to just give a very brief introduction of, you know, what the Blue Zones is, what its goals and objectives are. And then I would introduce Christie Conforti, who actually, she's our public policy lead and will be talking about the item we're bringing before you today. So what, one thing we know is the current trajectory of society in America, things are going great. But at the same time, you know, this push towards convenience is having health impacts for us. So we know how less physical activity takes place in our daily lives as a result of tools and mechanical devices that allow us to, you know, not have to use a vacuum or spend as much time out in our yards. We know that a lot of the food around us, while extremely tasty and, you know, from a sensory perspective is hard to resist, it plays on a lot of, you know, synapses that fire and say, yes, yes, yes. And yet those foods are, you know, leading to health impacts on our bodies because many of them are highly processed. And although we have more and more technology around us every day, in some ways, we are becoming more and more disconnected from physical contact with friends and family in our community. We also know that, you know, only 20% of our health outcomes are driven by our genetics. So 80% of our health is dictated by our lifestyle and the environment around us. Some of the things that we have seen and taken from the original Blue Zones, I think, are the crux of the Blue Zones Project here in Tuolumne County. So by way of introduction of some of the concepts, we thought we would quickly visit a couple of these communities. One is Sardinia, Italy. And gentlemen, sit up straight. You're more likely to live to be 100 years old in Sardinia than any other place in the world. One in 250 people, men specifically, live to be 100 years old in Sardinia. In America, that number is one in 6,000. So it has a huge impact. And that's primarily because what we see in, in mountainous community, which we can relate to in a place like Sardinia, is folks doing low-intensity physical activity on a daily basis. And that type of movement is the top of the Blue Zones pyramid and we'll visit that here briefly. Additionally, folks who live in Sardinia, this is another way that they would get, you know, kind of daily movement. But the purpose of the slide is to focus on the actual quality of the food and that many Sardinians, you know, will eat, you know, a diet that is primarily plant-based and food that they know where they came from, not processed. Additionally, in Sardinia, human connection is very important. Elders hold a really, are held in really high regard and are included as part of a growing family, often with multiple generations. In Okinawa, Japan, what we've seen are the healthiest women in the, in the world. And a big part of that, again, has to do with a plant-based diet and being conscientious about what they eat. And again, the social connectedness and they have these groups that they call Mois. Mois are small groups that form very early in life. So these women here have been part of their Mois together since they were five years old. And the average age of the women in this photo is 101 years old. And so they have tracked each other throughout their entire lives, supporting one another. And the last community we'll visit is right here in California. And it is La Malinda, which is in the southern part of the state. And despite the health outcomes of the communities, broader Southern California region, folks who live in La Malinda are statistically likely to live 10 years longer than the average of California. The average American, despite being in the very similar and close proximity to the rest of these communities. You hear the average ages in the upper, the late 80s versus health outcomes for average Americans. So what we've taken from these communities, and there's two more, one in Costa Rica and then one in Greece as well, are these kind of nine core principles of these five Blue Zones around the world. And the reason they called them Blue Zones is as this National Geographic team was looking for these statistically significant regions of longevity in the world, they simply circled those zones with a blue pen and they then became Blue Zones. And they are, they boil basically those lifestyle characteristics down to nine core principles. And of those nine, really there are just four kind of major principles. First is that daily activity that we mentioned. Second, being conscientious about what you eat. Third, being connected with your community, that includes family as well. And then finally, having the right outlook, which is essentially downshifting on a regular basis, taking deep breath in life, constantly going, 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 that has impacts on our lives. And probably more importantly, knowing exactly kind of what your purpose is, what it is that gets you up in, in the morning, why you're excited to get out into the world and interact with your thing, a big part of, you know, additional happier, healthier years. And now coming full circle, the reason why we're here before you today is the other thing that we, we learned as part of the Blue Zones research is nobody in these Blue Zones was striving to live a long, healthy life. One of the things that we noticed was the built environment, the world around you supported healthy behaviors day in and day out. So the Blue Zones model focuses on this life radius. That most of our lives are spent in a very small zone. A lot of our existence is spent, you know, within 10 miles of where we live and work. If we can make those places, spaces that gently nudge us in a healthy direction, we can have a huge impact on the overall health of the community. So with that introduction of what the Blue Zones is and the importance of the natural environment, built environment around us, we'd like to talk a little bit about age-friendly communities and do that.
Thank you again, Christine Conforti, public policy advocate for the Blue Zones Project. And thank you so much for letting us present to you today. Oops, did I do that? Oh. Oh, well, I, I need the slide up though. I'm just going to start, sorry. So as Tyler mentioned, one of the primary ways that the Blue Zones works with communities is on that life radius. We are partnering with the county and hopefully with the city of Sonora to make the city an age-friendly community as recognized by AARP Network of Age Friendly Communities in states. I broke it.
Uh-oh, that's expensive.
Yeah, it's not working. Yeah, that's third time's a charm. Okay. So the age-friendly concept, you know, maybe be wondering, what is that? Basically, back in 2006, the World Health Organization created the Global Network of Age Friendly Cities and Communities. That was in response to just extreme population growth in the 65 and older group. It's growing faster than all of the other age groups. And it's due mostly because of declining fertility, but it's also due to that people living longer. So, you know, we're, we're doing our jobs, but we're causing some problems in the meantime. Everyone's getting older and they need certain specific help. So in 2012, AARP created their age-friendly community, network of communities, just to specifically focus on the United States. And an age-friendly community is basically a community that's livable, it's walkable, it, the streets are safe, there's housing for all, transportation options, and access to key services and opportunities for residents of all ages and in all stages. Aging in place is a big one they wanted to advance efforts in. Everybody, research shows that majority of older people want to age in place in their homes and in their communities. They want to take, have seniors take a more active role in the community, whether it's volunteering, part-time work, community projects, that type of thing. And they want to encourage community planning and volunteer work. And they want to educate the community about the needs of seniors specifically. So why is this important? That aging population is still growing. So by the end of 2050, it's projected to be 75% of the population. So it's moving from 54 million up to 94 million in less than 30 years. And the, oh, the Older Americans Act identifies older adults as 60 and older. So you're, when you hit 60, you're eligible for programs like Meals on Wheels, in-home care services, and transportation services. And nearly 25% of the city of Sonora are aged 60 and older. And in the county, it's 34%. So we do have a gray community on our hands. And then what do we get from AARP? We get resources to identify and assess and understand where we are as a community. We get technical assistance, we get support and best practice materials. And most importantly, there's a level of grant opportunity that comes with being a member. They give grants out twice a year, I believe. And as a member of the network, we have a higher priority of getting a grant than somebody who's not included in the network. So how do we become age-friendly? It's a really simple process. We're in the, of course, enrollment or application phase to apply to become age-friendly. They do require a resolution or a proclamation from the city or county or entity that wants to become part of the network. Then we go on to a survey process where we conduct a survey, find out everybody's needs in the community. Area 12 Agency on Aging has already agreed to help us with that because they do an annual survey that they have scheduled right now for June of next year. So they're going to help us to be able to reach all those seniors and ask these specific questions on what we might need. And then we're going to create an action plan based on everything that we find out. And we're going to look at specific things that might need to be looked at, might need to be considered in order to become more age-friendly. And then we're going to implement the plan, just do the work, try to meet our goals. And then at the end of the five-year process, we sort of just evaluate, we modify if necessary, and then you kind of start over. And the action plan really specifies these eight domains of livability that the AARP came up with. So it's basically housing, you know, support and promote diverse housing options that are designed for all ages. You know, you don't need the houses with the cupboards way up here that nobody really uses anyway because they're too tall. So, you know, just have seniors in mind when you're developing properties. Social participation, loneliness is as chronic or as bad or more than, worse than having a chronic illness or a disease. It's debilitating. And COVID really kind of brought that to light with a lot of seniors being isolated in their homes. Respect and social inclusion, that's just, you know, having intergenerational opportunities. So where seniors can work with children, whether it's like in a community garden or telling stor, seniors telling their stories to kids so that they're both equally included in the community. Work and civic engagement, like I said, that's volunteering and just actual job employment if possible. Communication and information, so that's supporting broadband efforts because there's a lot of people who don't have internet access. They don't have access to information or to resources. Community health and services, sustaining and supporting affordable healthcare, supporting holistic options like the Tai Chi and yoga sessions at the Opera Hall. So that's a really big piece of this. And then outdoor spaces, just the parks, the green spaces, having, you know, railings on stairways, just making sure it's friendly and accessible to everybody. And then the transportation is just safe, affordable, accessible transportation. And that includes walking as well, so having safe, walkable sidewalks and streets. So they did a poll of the existing communities. Right now, there's about 688, I think, communities that are already part of the network. And 60% of those did report a change in public policy by just adding that age-friendly lens. So just keeping seniors in mind when they're doing their community planning. The private sector investment is basically when a restaurant or a business would sort of modify their layout to be more age-friendly. So maybe they make sure their aisles in the store are wider so wheelchair access can get through. Or just their safety in entering or exiting the store with more lighting or, you know, caution hazards if you have step, things like that. And then 30, 85%, just raised awareness. We are so lucky in this community. We are so lucky in this community because we already have amazing collaborations between a lot of programs, partners, agencies, and nonprofits. So this would just be another opportunity to engage the community even more and gain more strength or awareness for the seniors. So the next steps are basically to submit the application, which we would do through Blue Zones, for the city of Sonora to be, become a recognized age-friendly community. And Sonora would be the first rural city in the state of California to join the network. And I'm not sure if it's the smallest, it's very close to being the smallest, there might be a smaller one, but it's like part of Half Moon Bay or something like that. So it'd be the first rural, small city in the, in the state. And as many of you probably already know, the county did pass this resolution on August 16th, and that, it will make Tuolumne County the first rural county to join as well. So I appreciate your time, and I would, if you have any questions, if anyone has any questions, comments concerning...
Any questions from the council? No, well, none of us are old enough to be very interested yet. But, but, but that day will come. Anyway, it's a wonderful program, and I grew up in Loma Linda, so I already feel blessed.
Okay, you're probably already gonna live to be 100.
Oh, easily. If that, that's only a beginning, so, thank you very much then.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you.
And, go ahead, yes. Ms. Dunn is going to give us a presentation by the Chamber, the Sonora Chamber, Sonora Chamber of Commerce regarding Christmas Town, and also add a little bonus, I think. Yes, the little bonus about Chris? Oh, that's public comment, okay. Oh, you know, I, I, I try and be efficient and get everything into one. Okay, good deal. So, and to fill the dead air, Christmas Town is something that our Sonora Chamber has been working on for a little while, and it always sounds really exciting, and I look forward to hearing about, more about it.
Well, great, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm Katie Dunn, president of the Sonora Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here this evening to share with you, Christmas Town, Sonora. I'm gonna do a brief 2021 recap and then give you a little look into what we have planned for 2022. Let's just knock this off the podium. Oh, shoot, how do I, oh, see, I already messed up. Okay, I'm good, I'm good, I'm good. Okay, so the Sonora Chamber of Commerce embarked on a mission in 2021 to create a nationally-recognized Christmas Town in Sonora. We understand it will be a multi-year project that will include developing partnerships with local organizations to reach our goal. Designated Christmas Towns all over our nation drive visitors to their area year after year, which stimulates economic growth. Our project creates a community connectiveness and supports our mission to promote and support community, business, and tourism through marketing, promotion, and events in order to make the greater Sonora area an amazing place to live, work, and play. And now, I'd like to introduce our committee members. We have Andy Hauser, Anne Seggerstrom, myself, Katie Dunn, Margot Welton, Robyn Jen Hox, Sarah Gordon, and Shanna Huber. In January, this is now I'm getting into the recap, so in January of, of, of this year, we met, I'm sorry, let me back up. In January of 2021, we actually had our first meeting, and we came up with a lot of ideas, we brainstormed, and we prioritized them, and the number one priority was to light up downtown Sonora. So the majority of our fundraising efforts went to the lighting of the Red Church and Courthouse Park. We hired a professional, a professional holiday lighting company out of the Bay Area, and we also encouraged downtown businesses and property owners to participate. Christmas Tree Lane in Courthouse Park. So we partnered with Lowe's, who donated 10 Christmas trees, and then discounted another 20 at their cost. The trees were then given to participating nonprofits free of charge. Thirty local nonprofits participated. The Sonora Chamber awarded cash prizes to first, second, and third-place winners, with our committee being the judges. And then we also added a People's Choice Award where you could vote via a QR code that was strategically placed in the park, and I am happy to report that the People's Choice Award went to the friends of the Sonora Police Department. Letters to the North Pole Mailbox. So we created a one-of-a-kind Letters to the North Pole Mailbox, and it was donated by John Latory and then painted by our very own talented Judy Grossman. We received well over 30 letters to Santa, and then the letters were collected by our Chamber Elves, and you can see me as a Chamber Elf collecting the letters there. We partnered with CAD Radio, our local rate, community radio station that's located up at the dome, and created a Letters to Santa segment on their radio station, and Mr. and Mrs. Claus read the letters over the air. I do have an audio clip, but in the essence of time, I'm gonna forego that, and I certainly can send that to you if you'd like to hear it at another time. Okay, Santa's Village in Courthouse Park. So we wanted to build on what the city of Sonora had already done in Courthouse Park. So we partnered with the city of Sonora and extended Santa's hours for the three Saturdays leading up to Christmas week from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. We hired Mrs. Claus to assist Santa with crowd control, and then we decorated the transit bus stop, and then we created an elfy station for photo opportunities. The North Pole on Lineburg Street. So we partnered with Tuolumne County Arts and created the North Pole on Lineburg Street with crafting, carolers, and a holiday visual display. Again, we hired a professional, Mrs. Claus, who did Storytime and crafting and sing-alongs with our little ones. And then CAD Radio played holiday music featuring local musicians and bands. So we thought it was a huge success, but we really wanted to hear from our business owners and merchants, so we created a survey, and in January of this year, over 50 merchants and business owners were surveyed. A few of the questions were, what was your favorite thing about Christmas Town, Sonora? What could we do better? Do you think Christmas Town, Sonora brought you more business? And do you have any other ideas for other holiday festivities? So the results were, they love the decorations, especially Christmas Tree Lane, and of course, the Red Church all lit up. They love the community spirit, the Christmas spirit, and also the collective community spirit that our project brought to the downtown. What they'd like to see is more lights, more participation from the merchants, more kid activities, more Christmas activities up North Washington Street. They did feel it was a great turnout, they definitely had more walk-in traffic to the stores, and once, one business owner said it was the best December she's seen in 31 years. Some of their ideas that they shared with us was strolling carolers up Wa- up Washi- and down Washington Street, maps with the holiday events that we could have in the stores and also in our hoteliers, a lighting ceremony, Sunday events, food vendors with selling hot cocoa and kettle corn and grabbing-go snacks, and possibly carriage rides. So we really felt like this survey really proved to be invaluable to us. We really were able to identify our areas of, that we needed to improve upon, learn how to be a little bit more efficient, and then with our business owners and merchants really celebrate our success. So, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, developing partnerships with local organizations is the key to the success of Christmas Town, Sonora. It's that whole many hands make light work scenario, and these are some of our local partnerships for 2022. Many of them were partners with us in 2021. And then, we wouldn't be able to even have Christmas Town, Sonora if it wasn't for the generous contributions from our sponsors and supporters. And I have to say, fundraising is going to be an ongoing effort for us in order for this to be sustainable. And I'm happy to report that the Sonora Area Foundation has awarded Christmas Town, Sonora, another $10,000 for this year. Yay! Okay, so I know you've been waiting for all this. So, so this is what we have in store for 2022. So as you know, you know, lighting was our number one priority, but it was also the biggest expense for us. So we met as a committee, and we were trying to figure out ways, how can we save money? What can we do? So we decided to purchase the lights, which we have done. We hired a local company to hang the lights. It's Opposable Thuns, John Latory and crew. We're gonna be adding additional lights in Courthouse Park and Caulfield Park. It'll be the, the fairy polka dot lights up into the trees, it'll be very magical and fun. And then the lights will be hung in late October. They were hung late October last year, and it's great to have them hung ahead of time, and that way, when it's go time, you just plug them in. And one of the things that came out of our survey was the lighting ceremony. So we wanted to create a new tradition for downtown Sonora and create a lighting ceremony that would be the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, so this year it would be November 23rd. And we'd like to use the Fireman Museum's parking lot for this event and invite Father Christopher Rogers to do a blessing, local dignitaries to speak, like our mayor or supervisor District One. And then SRT Junior will be there to lead in Christmas caroling, and we may even have a cameo appearance from Buddy Elf of Elf the Musical. And then we'll have the countdown to the lighting of the Red Church, Caulfield Park, and Courthouse Park, and other businesses that want to jump on board. So we're gonna use the Chamber's walkie-talkies to coordinate the countdown, we'll have people strategically placed for the countdown, and then the big plugin. So that's the lighting ceremony. Next is Christmas Tree Lane and Santa's Village. So after last year, we realized that we have a lot more real estate to add and additional 10-plus nonprofits or trees. We're gonna partner with Lowe's again to get the trees at their cost, it will be at no charge to the nonprofit. This year, the county has asked that no presence or tree skirting be allowed under the trees because apparently it yellowed the lawn, so we will not be having anything under the trees. We're gonna be adding the additional lighting to the seven trees, so we're gonna wrap them a little tighter, so it'll be a little brighter in Courthouse Park, and then add those fairy twinkle lights. We will have our North Pole mailbox and the radio show again on CAD Radio, and I'm really excited that the nonprofit Mother Lode Jewish Community will join our holiday celebrations this year with a beautiful menorah lit up in Christmas Tree Lane. And then lastly, I want to share with you that I did confirmation from the Union Democrat that the Pop Hudson Sing will happen this year, and it's usually on the third Friday of December, so I plugged in December 16th there, don't hold me to that date, but that's the third Friday of December. And I'm just sharing that with you because that quadrant of grass that's closest to Green Street will be left open for the community and for the Pop Hudson Sing, so we won't be utilizing that space. And then North Pole on Lineburg, we're gonna continue to partner, partner with Tuolumne County Arts and CAD Radio, they're gonna do crafting and make Christmas cards and gift tags, and then CAD Radio will be playing holiday music there. And then, here's a few new things that we're doing, so Cookie Decorating with Santa at the Odd Fellows. Now, cookie decorating with Santa isn't a new idea for the city of Sonora because I know that you've done this in the past, but we want to bring that back, and we're gonna be partnering with the Odd Fellows. Last year, we realized, when we were doing Storytime and all of that in Lineburg, that we really can't control the weather, and it was getting windy and things were being blown everywhere, so we wanted to find a cozy little nook for our little ones, so we're gonna be doing storytelling and cookie decorating, sing-alongs with Santa and Mrs. Claus there. This also will encourage people to go up the street to North Washington, and the date and times are still, you know, we're still working through that, but probably we're looking at Sunday afternoons there. And then Winter Wonderland in Caulfield Park, we're gonna be, wait, oh, there you are, we're gonna be partnering with the Blue Zones Project, and the, the Sonora Chamber will be hanging the twinkle lights, we also have these really fun, big, plastic snowflakes that we're gonna hang from the market lights, we're gonna do elfy stations down there. We really want it to be a family fun zone, so that is a work in progress. And then the Holiday Music Series at the St. James Episcopal Church, the Red Church, we're partnering with the Red Church, which they're very excited to create a holiday music series. They've had a music series there, but since COVID, it's been dark, so we're hoping that the Holiday Music Series will help kickstart that music series back at the church, so that is a work in progress as well. And then, the Jolly Trolley Wagon. So this is a working title, I just kind of threw it out there, but we're gonna be partnering with Visit Tuolumne County and the Columbia Stage Line and Stable, will give Tuolumne, a Visit Tuolumne County, the naming rights on that one. The route is to be determined, but we want it to go with the flow of traffic, create stops along the way, maybe the Armory, Courthouse Park, and the Fire Museum parking lot. The reason why we chose a wagon is because it can carry eight to 10 people versus a carriage, and we want the rides to be free, and we want it to be a hop-on, hop-off kind of situation. It will be running Saturdays, December 3rd, 10th, and 17th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then we're gonna have strolling carolers, so we're gonna be partner with Sierra Repertory Theater. The carolers will be dressed in Victorian attire, and they will be performing Saturdays, December 3rd, 10th, and 17th from 5:00 to 8:00. They may even pop into a store that's open, you just never know. And then lastly, is the Giving Tree at Wild Bud Co. So Wild Bud Co. actually reached out to me, and they're looking to adopt family, and I said, hey, let's do a Giving Tree. So if, for those who don't know what a Giving Tree is, it's a Christmas tree with ornaments for generous people to select to donate Christmas gifts to adults and children in need. The adult, the ornaments include the following information, gender, age of the child, donation suggestions such as toys, clothing, shoe size, hygiene items, et cetera. It'll be set up prior to Thanksgiving, and the reason why I selected Give Someone a Chance and the Resiliency Center is that I found that last year over Christmas, several of our unhoused population were trying to open the Christmas trees that were underneath the trees in Courthouse Park, and it totally broke my heart, and it made me realize that this is a segment of our community that is often forgotten around the holidays. So it's our way of giving back, so that is the Giving Tree at Wild Bud Co. And then just to wrap up and give you a timeline, so late October is the installation of our lights, November 14th through the 22nd is when our decorating committee will be decorating downtown, which includes the installation of the North Pole mailbox, November 19th is the Giving Tree at Wild Bud Co. will be set up, November 23rd is the lighting ceremony, November 25th is our Christmas parade, November 30th is the setup of Christmas Tree Lane, the Wednesday following Thanksgiving, weather permitting. And then December 3rd, 10th, and 17th is Santa in Courthouse Park, North Pole on Lineburg, the Winter Wonderland in Caulfield Park, our carolers, the Jolly Trolley Wagon, and then the Letters to Santa on CAD Radio program, the dates and times to be determined, last year was Fridays at 4:00, but I still need to get with them and work out the details, as well as the storytelling nook at the Odd Fellows, so we're still working out the details there. Any questions?
I have a question. You mentioned the, the reliance on like fundraising and stuff, I'm assuming there's a sizable contingent of volunteers that help put things together, I would imagine. Is it possible for one to volunteer to help with?
That would be awesome.
Yeah.
You know, this is our first time, so it's a work in progress, and I know that the Resiliency Center and Give Somebody a Chance is really excited to be considered and be a part of it. And so basically, you, you grab an ornament, and you buy the gift, and you bring that gift back to Wild Bud Co., and then it's separated between the two organizations, and then, and then they'll come and pick up the gifts. That's how it works, but yeah, that would be awesome.
I was more interested in, you know, putting lights up and stuff like that with the actual preparation of the event when it comes to volunteers.
Absolutely, yes, most definitely, that would be awesome.
And how would, how would one go about doing that?
Well, you can contact me at kdonex3@comcast.net. That'd be fabulous. Hey, we're looking for volunteers, we're also looking for funding, so.
Yeah, we're tired already.
I know, I know. I know, I know. Any other questions?
Yes, so some of us forget dates occasionally. Is the, will the dates for these different events be up on the Chamber website?
Wow, that's a great question, Mark. Actually, we have a Christmastown dot, ChristmastownSonora.org website. And all of this will be updated on our website. Also, we'll be creating rack cards that are going to go into all the businesses with a map on one side of where everything's going to be. And then the flip side will be, it will coincide with the map.
That was, I'm sorry, Mark.
Too cool. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Because like I said, I forget those things.
That was ChristmastownSonora.org, the website?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dunn. We thank you and the Chamber and your work there. Wow. So yay, that brings us to public comment. If we were going to start with the Zoom commenters, and do we have any comments? Ms. Beesey Smith, if you would like to take the floor, I think you will be unmuted and you're unmuted. Great.
Thank you, Ms. Bier. Hi. I'm here this evening to invite all of you to join us on September 30th at Sonora Courthouse Park for a very respectful and reverent ceremony that is going to be held, a sunset memorial service to honor the courage of the children who are the victims and survivors of the Indian boarding schools. September 30th is International Orange Shirt Day, and it is a day that is commemorated in both Canada and the United States to remember the nearly 300,000 indigenous children of North America who were forced into the Indian boarding schools beginning in the mid 1600s until the late 1970s. This event that we're having here in Sonora is the first Central Sierra Regional Orange Shirt Day commemoration. And to the best of my knowledge, after living here for 50 years, I honestly think it's the first specific event to honor and recognize the indigenous people of our own community. We have, this particular event is partnered with both of our local sovereign nations, the Tuolumne Band of Mewoc and the Chicken Ranch Rancheria Band of Mewoc. We will have representatives from both of those tribal groups coming to speak at this event. We also have a woman who is a survivor of Sherman Institute in Riverside, California, near Loma Linda, Mark, you will know. And we have another woman whose mother attended Stewart Indian School near Reno, which is, and both of those schools were places that many, many people from the Mewoc communities, including those here in Tuolumne County, were forced to attend. There were 25 Indian boarding schools in the state of California. Most of those were run by either the government or by church groups as mission schools. And the vestiges of those experiences was to literally strip the native culture away from these children and replace it with a forced assimilation. My own grandfather attended three of these schools. There was a vast effort to stop them knowing their native traditions. And today that is changed as the seventh and eighth generations of children and families are reviving their languages and reviving their native cultures. So I hope that you can come. It's at, begins at six o'clock. And if at all possible, please wear an orange shirt. If you're not able to attend, wear an orange shirt on that day. And I'll be telling the story of why it is called Orange Shirt Day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Beesey. Any other Zoom comments? Not seen any. I will close the Zoom comments and bring it to the Council Chambers. And you are welcome, sir. Come to the podium, please.
Hello, my name is Frank Bier. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Couple of things. On the fentanyl issue, can't address the symptom. You have to address the cause, the root cause. Over 90% of all the fentanyl comes across our southern border. It would be very helpful if the city council and the chief of police, the White House and Congress and ask them to please, you know, at least attempt to limit the amount of fentanyl that's crossing the border. Next issue is transparency. I want to thank you for having the meetings after when most people work. Unlike this county, they have their meetings during the day, so they limit, they exclude almost all the working people. Sorry, a lot of pain. It would be helpful if you would move the public comment before all these long presentations because a lot of people, you know, they have a problem with, you know, injuries and it's very difficult to sit for like the time. And, you know, it'd be very, a lot helpful. It'll be better. On your transparency, when you announced it, the city announced that they were going to raise, try to raise the tax rate by 1%. I came in, I filed California Public Records Act request for the comprehensive annual financial report, which the state now calls California Annual Comprehensive Financial Reports. How is the public supposed to know the financial health of the county if the information isn't available to us? Y'all, have you seen the comprehensive annual financial reports? Do you understand what kind of problem the city's in? You know, it's, you know, Tuolumne is one of the poorest counties in the state. According to the census information, $35,000 is your average income. But if you exclude your overpaid federal, state and local government employees and pensioners, the real, the real income for the county is around $22,000, $25,000 the average.
Thirty seconds.
Yeah, I know. And when, you have to understand it imposes a really big hardship on the public when you increase the taxes. I'd strongly encourage you to look for ways to cut the cost of operating. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. And you are welcome to contact me per email or phone me. It's, I would be delighted to speak with you, but this, not right now, no, I don't. But I'm on the city website. Ms. Dunn.
Hello, Katie Dunn, Sonora Chamber. Just a new development for the Sonora Chamber of Commerce that I wanted to share, which you probably already know about, but the Sonora Chamber will be taking on Trick or Treat Street for the city. And well, thank you, thank you. Happy to help, happy to help.
Thank you. Sometime, if you would let me interrupt you, there is no level, it appears, to which the Chamber will not volunteer. People often do not realize that you are volunteers and we appreciate that so greatly.
Well, you're very welcome. I appreciate that. So basically what we're going to be doing is reaching out to the merchants. We already are working on our flyer. So we'll be creating posters that they'll hang in their windows. And right now it's tentatively scheduled for Saturday, October 29th from 4:00 to 5:30. And so we do have a team working on that, so I wanted to share that with you. And we already got, we started getting calls about it, so that's kind of cool. So there is, you know, people do want it. I know that, yeah. And then the other thing I wanted to share is tomorrow night is our Chamber mixer at the Bradford House at 5:30 to 7:00. It's right downtown and hopefully the weather will hold out for us. But I just wanted to share that with you and that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So closing public comment. I'm sorry. You, thank you. You know, it was unintentional. I was desperately looking.
I'm Alan Zimmerley with the Historic Dome Preservation Group. I spoke a couple of months ago and I just wanted to bring a little update on the status of our project. On August 9th, the school trustees, Sonora High School Board of Trustees, again designated the dome and the surrounding property, the whole seven acres as surplus property. However, only the dome is available. The rest of the property is not available, so they're only going to dispose of the dome and the two classroom wings. The city probably got a letter soon after that announcing this because the city, the county, various other governmental entities receive an announcement saying that the surplus property is available. That is a two-month process, so about the 15th of October, the property will be available to the general public, which includes the Historic Dome Preservation Group. And we will probably start talking with the Sonora Union High School District trustees about what it takes to acquire that property. Ed Pelfrey has done a lot of the work. I have to congratulate Ed Pelfrey, Superintendent Ed Pelfrey and the trustees. The dome has been a burden for the high school district for a long time, but Ed Pelfrey has taken it on and the trustees have taken it on finally to release the school district of that burden. So they should get credit for taking on the project. It's probably not going to be a popular project, but a difficult project. But so I do want to give them credit for standing up and taking it on. The, Ed Pelfrey has hired a, an appraiser to appraise the dome building and also a surveyor to survey the property. So those are two elements that are in the works that need to be done before any disposition of the property takes place. Hopefully it'll go forward at next month. Probably have to wait till after the election because there will be new board members, definitely new board members, probably definitely one new board member.
Thirty seconds.
After the election. So we probably really won't get into any kind of meaningful discussions until November. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zimmerley. And with that, I will again close public comment, bring it back to the council and starting on the consent calendar. So the first item is consider adoption of Resolution 09-19-2022-A authorizing remote teleconferencing meetings of the city council and its committees and commissions for 30 days pursuant to Government Code Section 529er 53 bracket E, Brown Act provisions. Tracy Skelly, Minister of Services Director.
We're going over the consent calendar?
And I.
This is the item that I thought that you pulled.
I pulled it.
Mayor, so you want to just discuss this item and then we can take the rest of the agenda?
Okay, and I will. So we had the good fortune, Sunday night, our President Biden on CBS 60 Minutes announced that the pandemic is over. And I thought that the council would probably appreciate the opportunity to at least discuss returning to normality and perhaps not doing this in the future. So.
So before you have your discussion, can I just, so I don't think that we're, because as you get clarification, I don't think that we're using teleconferencing for any of our remaining advisory bodies, the planning commissioner or that, correct? So you are correct in that because council has operated present and in person for some period of time, you would not need to do this continuing authorization in order to be able to function the way that you're currently on. That being said, it would change the rules if anyone was to be at a fire, for instance, and needing to.
I know. I brought this up realizing that I am probably the most effective person, but I still thought it fair to allow discussion and comment.
And that would be separate from the, just so we're clear, there's the elected official, appointed official participation, which requires this resolution. There's a separate component dealing with the public participation that has nothing to do with the resolution.
Understood.
So just that we're all on the same page as what we're talking about. So with that, I just want to get that clarification.
So, and in any event, it's a great opportunity to rejoice that the pandemic is over. Yay, exactly. So, well.
At least on 60 Minutes.
That was our president who announced that, not 60 Minutes.
So what I don't, may I?
Please.
What I don't understand is, all right, so he announced the pandemic is over, but does that immediately dissolve this resolution?
So from a legal perspective, the governor, which kind of sets our rules in California for government, general law cities, we have until, we have some period of time under which we can still operate under this resolution. It would kind of, as your legal counsel, since we're not really using it, if you don't think that you're going to use it for elected or appointed officials, then it makes sense to get rid of it. If you think that for reasons such as fire, that somebody might need to use it, then it may make sense to do it because the obligations that exist for where you have to post and what has to be accessible to the public and to participate remotely are much, are somewhat onerous, so, and time consuming.
Especially if one's not in town. So I am like, I mentioned the most direct beneficiary and I forewent a day of work last year in order to make it to a critical meeting. So, but I wanted to bring it up and separate it out so we could discuss it.
So I'll jump in. Go ahead, Ann, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I would agree with the attorney. There's no reason to keep it, get rid of it. And then I also feel there's no way to vet people who are on Zoom. Where are they coming from? And those are my two comments. Thank you.
I was just going to ask if that then precludes anyone participating on Zoom?
No, that does not. And so a permanent Zoom policy, if and when that becomes an issue, is a different conversation, I believe, correct?
I just taking the comments that Frank made earlier in regards to transparency. I know this wouldn't really affect people participating in the, you know, digital Zoom environment, but I mean, even for us, you know, we never know when an emergency is going to come up or, you know, if work, you know, calls you off the job. And I will never oppose people having more options to participate or do their job necessarily. Just my two cents on that. It seems to have worked, you know, over the last three years, you know, semi effectively, so.
Okay, thank you, Counselor White. Do we have any indication how long the state might intend to be, just be keeping these per se? Or is that just the unknowable?
I'm trying to remember it off the top. Tracy, do you want to say 2020, January of 2024? What's coming to head? I'd have to double check to see what it is. It's some, it's sometime in the head. I mean, I will restate my belief that I think that at some point in time, we're likely to see. likely to see the state acquire that you have teleconference as an option for at least public participation. I think the questions regard, what, what's only an issue here though is elected and appointed official.
Correct, yeah.
Participation. And again, I'm going off memory, I believe it's January of twenty twenty-four. I know it's at least six months away, so it's at least the middle of twenty twenty-three. So, so really it's about whether or not you want to use it or not, really, because it's for, it's for your guys' convenience. It doesn't have anything to do with the public, what we're talking about right now.
Well, like I said, it benefits me, but that's not the only criteria for going forward with something, so.
I mean, as someone that does travel for work, it, it could also affect me, so you are, you're not alone in that, and again, I'm viewing this as like a have it and not need it type of thing, you know? Again, it's just kind of a, a failsafe as far as I'm concerned to still participate and meet quorum requirements potentially.
I just want to do what best protects the city legally. I will say as mayor, two years ago, it was brutal, especially some of the talks we had to have and everyone, it didn't matter left or right, I was, I mean, you know, and Mark, you were getting, all of us were getting beat up at one point over this, but I just want to see what protects the city the best and if there's a possibility that the state could come back in and try to punish, in our case, the city of Sonora for not doing this, that's my only real, real concern.
Thank you. Just from a legal perspective, I just want to be really clear, I'm, I'm not, I'm not worried about, I'm not worried about that, and when I talk about having some kind of teleconference capability beyond what, you know, like the old way we used to do it with the conference call number, that, that, that would exist, I, I think that that's more likely where you're going to see legislation, not, not so much on, on elected officials.
Thank you very much. If I, we have no further council discussion, I will ask for public comment from Zoom.
So we're clear, this is, this is only on a consent calendar item ten.
But I do need to ask for public comment, don't I?
Yeah, no, I'm just saying that the comments are restricted right now to comment ten.
And it's just to this item on it, okay. Busy Smith, would you?
Here I am, I'll try, I'll keep it short here. I just want to commend you for the really compelling opportunity that you have given all of us to continue participation and to even expand participation in discussions about our city government in these last almost three years, and I hope that you will continue that, given the presentation today from the Blue Zones Group and our realization that as we age, sometimes it's hard to get out to participate in things of this nature. Being able to keep the teleconference features and Zoom features very much alive in terms of citizen participation would be a way that those people who are impaired in some way or just can't get themselves out, have an opportunity to still be involved in citizen democracy. Thank you so much.
Indeed, thank you. Seeing no other Zoom comments, does the public in the chambers have any comments? No, so I'll close public comment. Do we have a motion or?
So just for the public's information, just to be clear, and like I said, I try to answer, ask the questions even though I know what the answer is. So for the public's information, if we were to get rid of this teleconferencing thing, that would also get rid of the public participation or would not? Because I'm going to get the phone call tomorrow.
It would not, so, so not, not adopted, this, this policy is for, is what is in place for remote participation for elected and appointed officials? If you would like an agenda item that would discuss in the future, using Zoom or whatever technology for the public, that would be a separate discussion item that we're not agendized today for.
And then also, if we get rid of this tonight, are we able to bring it back in a month because we find out that it's working out better? Is it one of those things, if it dies now, it kind of dies for the future also?
Good question.
No, I mean, it, I mean, it would require you to adopt the resolution again before you would be able to go back to the old way of, I mean, go back to the existing, right now way of, of doing the meetings. So, so you could, you could do it again, but, but you could only do it after you hold a meeting where you've adopted the resolution again.
Here's my thoughts on it, and I know everybody is wanting to know what my thoughts are, but.
Everybody.
Yes, everybody, but here's what my thoughts are. If, if the public is still participating from Zoom, then I believe as electeds, we should still be able to participate from Zoom. If the public wasn't allowed to participate from Zoom, I think that the electeds also should set the example and not be able to participate from Zoom.
Good point.
That's, that's my humble opinion.
And that's why I wanted to bring it open for discussion so that we could explore it and maybe open my mind a little bit or close it, and so I am looking for a motion.
Would this be a motion to keep item, agenda item ten on the consent calendar?
Yes, or just pass the?
Uh, yeah, I will, I'll move to approve the consent calendar as written. Or just, I'm sorry, I will move to approve item number ten as written.
I'll second it, but I would like to add something in here, maybe next month when we go to approve this, maybe have the whole thing on here with the Zoom for the public and then for us. I guess, and if I can add this, throw this in here, my issue is, is that if, if we kill it for us, we kill it for the public, but vice versa. The last thing I want to do is to see an elected board look like a set of elitists, meaning the public can't comment, but the city council still can't, so that's, that's my issue right there, so I, I think next month or maybe next meeting, who knows, we bring it back before us, so just my idea, Mr. Mayor.
We can contemplate that.
And seeing as the, you know, the declaration, I guess, just happened, what, last night, you were saying?
Yeah, well, it's Sunday.
Or Sunday. I, I just, it seems a little hasty, you know, like, given the way things have gone, you know, we can't predict the future and it's, again, I think it's good to have that tool available to us.
A great opportunity to celebrate and announce it, so I, so with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposition? Please.
I just needed clarification about the main concern was people watching could be from the area, Nevada, New York. What was your response to that?
I mean, with, I mean, the response, if you're asking me about the participant, which is a little bit of a tweak, then, yeah, we would not be able to prevent them from talking and they would have the same right to participate in the same three minutes as, as any, as anybody else.
In that regard, what I'll say.
Thank you. Any abstentions? So passes four, one, zero.
Mr. Mayor, could we bring that back in next month to talk about the public participation?
We can.
Okay, thank you.
I, I would love that too.
Yeah.
So be, it would be two component, yes, discussion then, so we're just clear.
That is presuming that I will be present.
I hope so.
You just approved this, you can do this.
Well, exactly, but like I said, I am generally the biggest beneficiary this time of year and it costs me a day of much-needed work, so. Moving on, the rest of the consent calendar, which is, if I can remind you, ab, minus item thirteen because of certain exigencies that were beyond our control right now.
Mayor, just because it's been agendized, when you take public comment, anybody who would like to make a public comment on thirteen is entitled to do that, even though the council has taken action to not take any action on that item tonight.
Thank you very much, sir. So, yeah. Do I need to read these off then? Or, okay, miss consent calendar, so with that, any pub, any further council comment before I go to public comment? So, asking for public comment on the remainder of the consent calendar, do we have any Zoom members? It looks like Beezy is not muted, so did you want to say something, Ms. Smith?
Yes, I'm just going to say with regards to the provision about eventually getting, working towards EV chargers, I just read that very briefly, but I just want to comment that I really hope that we'll move in that direction swiftly, and, and my reasons is the increasing number of electric cars that I see in Sonora every single day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any, any further comment or any public comment from the chamber? Darren, you must have something to say about electric cars, you let me drive yours. So, okay, seen none. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
Go ahead, Andy. I will move to approve the consent calendar minus item thirteen.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The questions are supposed to come before we're voting.
Sorry, I, number eleven, the twelve, is that, is that what you're saying?
That is what we are voting on, because that's consent calendar and considered routine unless it's pulled aside earlier.
Well, then I, I do have a comment about the AARP.
Mm-hmm.
I know many years ago, another group was invented in opposition to the AARP message of a knock, the American Association of American Citizens, because they don't agree with a lot of the AARP, and isn't I actually, I've got something like fifteen of them? So I love the Blue Zone Project, but I was wondering if you could find maybe another partner, that's more of a statement.
Thank you very much. Did you want to vote? For or against?
I'm going abstain.
Abstain, okay. So, all in opposition, say nay. Any abstentions? Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. So with that, we have concluded the simple stuff.
So four zero one.
Four zero one. So, new business. Consider approval of the thirty-ninth Annual Historic Downtown Sonora Christmas Parade on Friday, November twenty-fifth at six PM sharp, sharp.
Sorry, we have to go back to public hearing.
I'm sorry. Did, oh! Yeah, well, you, I, thank you, you have to remember reading, reading is hard. So, public hearings, I'm getting too excited. Consider the two-year extension for the Questa Heights subdivision vesting tentative subdivision map. The tentative map approval will be extended to March third, twenty twenty-six. Rochelle Kellogg.
Thank you. So we have before you tonight a request for a tentative map extension. That is the only thing being considered tonight at this meeting. This is for the Questa Heights subdivision, it's located on twenty point seven six acres. It's at Shaw's Flat and Roble Road. This project was originally approved in two thousand eight and was originally, would have expired in two thousand eleven, but during the recession, there were several state extensions that extended the map out during the recession period at a state level, and so the map, and then there were a couple of extensions that were granted by the city as well. So the map right now is tentatively scheduled to expire on March third, twenty twenty-four, or could expire on March third, twenty twenty-four. The property is Zoned R one, it is, was originally forty-eight unit residential lots, it was reduced to forty-six back in twenty twenty-one, so it, they are large lots, it's a large lot subdivision, most ranged to just under a quarter acre to just under an acre, so it is, it's Zoned R one, actually under the R one zoning, you could go down to six thousand square feet a lot, but this is not that type of a subdivision, it is a large lot subdivision. The, I meant original map, like I said, was approved in two thousand eight. The project was sold by the original developers back in twenty twenty-one from Dave and Sheri Cowden to SV one ten LLC, they're the current owners of the property, and they, again, are requesting the two-year extension. They, after they purchased the property, they did come before the council, for those of you that were here then, they asked to, for the council to consider the reduced number of lots, which brought it to forty-six, and also to approve a possible phasing of the map, and so the council did approve the possibility of phasing the maps over the, the entire project over three phases. So the phase map was approved back in twenty twenty-one as well as the additional two years, and the, and lowering the number of units. At that time, the conditions were allocated to the phases, so they have an option, they can do all of the project or they can phase it, and probably will depend on, on timing, on improvements that they, at the time, on which direction that they will go. So with the, with an extension, what that allows, it provides them the additional time in order to record their first final map, so that can either be phase one, or it could be the final map for the entire project. Staff is in support of it there, we have not been through a recession, but we have been through COVID, and I know that there have been several issues that have come up while they've been trying to work on all of the aspects of the final map to get it to the point where they can record it. They are redoing all of the reports that needed to be updated after they took over ownership. There's also been a couple of issues with utilities that have been placed out near the site, some is with, with PG&E. There's also some issues with the TUD placement, placement of the lines and stuff that they're having to deal with and their new station that they have. So they've had some things they've been working with through, they've been working at the pace as fast as they can, but there is a real concern that they have that they won't be able to be, to a point where they can approve or have the final map ready for approval by twenty twenty-four. So, under the government code section, they are eligible for one last two-year extension. Under the government, state government code, there's a total of sixteen years that the city can approve an extension on a map. This is outside of the state automatic approval, so it's in addition to that. They can have this one last two-year extension, which would bring the first, the map expiring on March third, twenty twenty-six. Staff feels that this will give, this should give them enough time, and it is the last extension that we can grant unless there was something that came down from the state level, and that we should give them the time needed so that they can finish up all of the documents and the plans and the reports and the studies that they need to do so they can move forward with the recording of either a phase map or the entire project map. Once the first final map is recorded, they'll have an additional four years to finish up all of the, record any of the additional maps that if they do a phasing of the, otherwise, if that's a mute point, because they'll have recorded the final map that includes all of the subdivisions. When you, in order to record a final map, they have to have the public improvements in and in place, or they have to bond for it, so this will provide the additional time also so that they can get improvements in the ground, and it'll be a lot easier for them move forward with the project. In evaluating the area, it really hasn't changed that much, they, we feel that the conditions that were in place are reasonable at the time and are still reasonable today, and we have been work, they have been working diligently with staff, including the city engineer, to try, to try to move forward with the project. Everybody, through the public hearing notice, everybody within three hundred feet were notified about the project's request for an extension or the owner's request for an extension. We did receive one phone call, I tried to call the individual back twice today, but I did not, was not able to get through on their cell phone, but other than that, we've received no written comments or any other phone calls on it. And we do feel that the SEQA document that was done with the map is still valid and we do not expect any, we don't, we don't anticipate any additional SEQA or issues regarding to SEQA, regarding to, related to the project. With that, like I said, we are recommending approval at the staff level or, or approval by the staff of this extension. There's been a lot of money and time put into this project and it is a good project for the city.
Thank you very much. Does the council have any questions for staff?
I, I looked up the location of the property on the map, you know, reading through the agenda, this is currently all completely undeveloped.
Correct.
Is that, like, no current utilities or anything like that in place at all?
The only thing that's there is the TUD put in the water tank, the big water tank that's up on the hill, that originated from this project, but TUD went. That originated from this project, but T U D went forward on their own. They got some grant money and were able to put the tank in. And that benefits all of those, the surrounding properties with better water and fire flow.
Might be kind of an esoteric question, but, you know, we think of things like, you know, water, electricity, you know, those utilities. I would hope that some sort of broadband internet capability is also being considered as part of the development of this project. Is there?
You know, you'd have to ask the opponent. I'm not sure exactly. All the utilities that are included definitely water. We require water, sewer, and electricity, so.
And speaking of teleconferencing and stuff like that, you know, increased public participation, you know, that's why I bring it up. Yeah, thanks.
And, and the last council enthusiastically extended it prior, just because any new homes are going to be a benefit and help us out. We desperately need more housing, both in the city and the county, so. That's it. Mr. Popovich, would you like to speak to this issue right now, or? Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having the meeting, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Greg Popovich. I'm with S V One Ten, which is the developer that bought it from the Cowtons. I've been in the county for quite some time. We've developed some very nice properties in the area. We did Apple Valley, Ridgewood. Went and bought Rolling Oaks out of bankruptcy and brought that back to life, got that to be a community, a really nice community. And have taken pride in all the work that we've done in the county. This particular project, we acquired from the Cowtons. There was a number of issues that were that we didn't know about, that we needed to overcome. We've been working with Jerry Ficello, the city engineer, overcome a lot of the potential issues or the issues for the roads as far as civil engineering and the way the roads need to be constructed. Had some problems with some of the local utilities. Their lines, water lines and things like that are either too shallow or too deep, which we'll need to redo quite a bit of that. By the way, we did donate the land for the water tank to T U D. So T U D was able to put that in, which created fire flow and a number of the things that the city was missing, which actually was very, very large for fire. Speaking of fire, we met with Chief New. We did have a potential issue out there, worked with the adjacent neighbors. Went out and got a full clearance from Chief New. Once we went out and did some work on the property during the fire season, we went and cleared around and did the defensible space around the adjacent neighbors in order to sit there and to accommodate their requests for, for fire mitigation. We've worked diligently towards moving forward. We ran into COVID. We ran into, now we've ran into an interesting economy, especially for the housing market with over doubling the interest rates for housing, investors and things like that. Not come forward recently that we were counting on. So with the extension, that'll grant us the time in order to sit there and to develop the property. We're looking at doing it in phases. The first phase will be down at the bottom, Long Shaw's Flat Road, which will be very beneficial to that, that area at the bottom. And then move on up the hill as we, we move further. I've had some interesting offers, or they weren't really offers, suggestions of using it as grazing land and things like that. And if anybody has some cows that want to run it, hopefully we start before next summer. But anybody wants to graze out there, they're more than welcome. And as I was mentioning before, the grass was cut around the neighbors' houses.
Sir, could you, could you wait and come up for public comment when that is appropriate, please?
All adjacent properties to this property were fire mitigated, and we have a full letter from the Sonora Fire Department saying that all adjacent properties to this property were mitigated. Do you have any questions on the project?
I know that you and I have talked a little bit about it, some of the challenges that have happened, and I've talked to some of the neighbors up there. It's been a little while back, but.
Many, many interesting challenges, especially with utilities being placed in our entrance and needing to, to work around some of the issues that engineering is. We're working on engineering with the correct.
Mr. Mayor, it looked like you had a question. Do you have a timeline for each step of this phase of when you expect them to be completed? And are you intending on selling these lots as vacant lots, or are you going to build houses on them, or?
We would like to build the houses on all of them. As far as timing, that's going to depend on the market. Right now, we're going to go through phase one. As soon as I can get the final approvals on the final engineering, then we will be securing the funds for that and working forward towards phase one. Phase two will follow immediately after phase three, immediately after that.
Do you have, like, any sort of ballpark?
I was hoping last June.
Okay, okay. Well, I mean, in, in light of that, going forward, do you have any estimation?
So, I'm sorry.
A lot of that will have to do with the city approvals.
Okay.
And part of that is, so it's, this is the, is it the final maps and the final bureaucratic approvals that we're talking about and not the actual building of homes quite yet? I think the streets have to be in, the, the, the water lines, the sewer lines, et cetera, have to be in to be approved for the first phase. But that's not an actual home yet, and that's where the building of houses will probably depend on market conditions.
Yeah, that is correct. And we, we're imagining the first phase to sell out fairly quickly, which will help with, there are fire interest out there, and I, I agree a hundred percent. So it's one of these things to where as the project progresses, it creates more property taxes for the city and county, creates a fire break for all that. We've already mitigated and met with the mitigation measures for the fires. We've got, we've actually gotten three reductions from the initial phases in order to sit there and address what's happened in Santa Rosa and has happened in, in Paradise and a number of places in order to help with that in the future. And so in the future, those type of things will be fully mitigated.
You said city and county. Do you have an estimate of how many cities will be in county?
Well, they're all, they're all city, but I don't, I'm not quite sure how your general fund works and how the property taxes get distributed.
Mr. Mayor, I do have two small questions.
Please.
So just for the public's knowledge, because again, I'll get a phone call or two about this.
Sure.
What type of houses are, are, what, what type of houses are, what's the goal? What type of houses are you putting in?
There'll be working class housing. It'd be ranging from, I would imagine somewhere, we, we've talked about building the C C Rs around seventeen hundred square foot on a
Okay.
Three, three twos, three bedroom, two baths. Yeah.
And then the next question is, with the, the land that was donated for T U D and T U D did their thing. And you may not be able to answer this. Rochelle, you may be able to answer it. Was all that water for the fire flow and everything, was that connected to the adjacent neighborhood?
The, the tank itself serves multiple neighborhoods and took out multiple failing water systems. So that system that was created up there basically created fire flow for the entire Sonora area down below. And I'm not sure which facilities it took, but they actually demolished some of the facilities, old facilities, because of being able to utilize this as a, a water source.
I, I knew that answer, but I wanted to hear someone else say it also. A lot of that stuff was up there from right, right after World War Two.
Oh, yeah.
So, okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. And you, did you have another question? Thank you very much, Mr. Popovich.
And in support of the project. Thank you.
So, yes, quite. With that, I'd like to see if we have any public comment on Zoom. Ms. Smith?
I just need to, I need clarification on where this is located. I, I'm looking at a map of Sonora and I see Shaw's Flat and I see Roble Road. I'm just trying to get a vibe for where the city limits are and is the entire project inside the city limits?
So, our applicant, I'm sorry, yes, the entire project is inside the city. And I believe, is it, so is it just north of Roble Road or in that? Okay, it's.
We see it's north of Roble Road.
Okay.
North of Roble Road.
There. It's twenty acres total.
Yep.
But it is north of Roble Road.
And east of Shaw's Flat.
And, and east of Shaw's Flat. Okay, thank you. I just needed that clarified. Thank you.
Okay. Closing the Zoom public comment. Do we have any public comment? It looks like we do, from our chambers. No, no, no. Yes. And that way you are recorded for all posterity.
My name is Raymond Sharp. I'm here for my mother's behalf. We bought a house here on one eighty-four Roble Road. And from what we're noticing here on this map, that the driveway of this place is just going to come right out into our house. And it seems like it's going to be a lot of traffic. So, so I'm just not sure what's going to take place with trucks coming in, all the roadwork being done, me having to get my mom out of the house, go to the hospital, doctors, things like that.
I am certain that staff will look into it. I do not know the particulars, sir. And we don't generally respond directly to public comment like that, but.
So Mayor, what I.
I'm sorry.
Just, just so I could, what I'd probably suggest is, is that we have the gentleman meet with Rochelle. And then he can address any concerns that he has, and she could explain how functionally, what, you know, mitigation measures or processes.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Sharp, did you hear that suggestion from our attorney? Okay, he suggested that.
So my suggestion is that you give your contact information to Rochelle, amongst many other things, Community Development Director. And she can get back to you and be willing, I'm sure, to sit down with you and get on the phone with you and walk through how the process would work.
We've had several fires up there in just this last year. One house and another one across the way.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. We value all of our city residents and want to be improving the entire area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori McEntee. My daughter has a house. Our name is on it, too. My husband and I, on Shaw's Flat and Roble. My biggest concern is we moved up from Bay Area, totally run out of our neighborhood with what's going on with growth. I know we need growth. I was in the construction business, the whole nine yards, for many years. Growth is important. But growth down there was a nightmare. We had no parking. We had sewer problems. We had so many things. So we did move up here. We want to stay in California. We love California. Okay? But my concerns on this one is, that's a lot of houses. They're big parcels. Are they, do they have future parking agreed? Because I'm, I don't know if it's going to be a street with parking out in front, or are they going to stay on their lots with parking? Because then they, if they have lots of people, parking goes out onto the other streets. We don't want a San Francisco nightmare, a Bay Area nightmare. There's fights. There, it's horrible to park in front of your own house. Way to put a garbage can there to get out in the morning, you know, to go to work. I mean, I literally run out of our neighborhood, besides other stuff, violent stuff, robberies, rich people, poor people. It was bad. But what, another question I have here is, I know our roads need a lot of work with all the construction trucks coming and going. Is there anything set up that's going to be through these taxes before it's too late to handle the, the truckloads on the roads? And would there be a stop sign eventually put at Roble and Shaw's Flat for traffic coming and going? As people come and go from work or school, because there'll be a lot more traffic. Because I know when you come from Mount Brow onto Shaw's Flat, and then I come over to Roble, where my daughter is, you're going thirty-five miles an hour. I know some of those have been changed to thirty. You got thirty-five miles an hour. You got all the cows on the one side, turkeys running on the other. Next thing, it jumps down to twenty-five. Most people do not stop at that twenty-five. They just keep flying through. When I, when I go to pull in my daughter's driveway, and it's a steep kind of jump driveway, depending what car I have, I have to slow down. I put my blinkers on. But everyone up here, I have to say, is really courteous. Everyone's very nice, but there's a lot more people coming in now. And I have seen it in the last year of being here. So is there any plans for a stop sign there to slow that traffic down?
For that, as per our last commenter, I'm sorry. But I would, I would suggest consulting with Ms. Kellogg. And the, the parcel, well, the entire acreage there is twenty acres. And it is going to be, I believe, forty-six homes now. And they will have parking, individual parking. That will not be a situation like we deal with here in downtown Sonora. So, but for your specifics, for some of your other questions, I think consulting with Ms. Kellogg is the best avenue to get the best information.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, please come on up.
Yes, my name is Andy Schoenfeld. I live at one oh four Roble Road. You know, when I purchased the home up there, one of the nice attractions to it is, is it was a, you know, pretty secluded street, small neighborhood. I think it's twenty-nine houses. There's a mixture, mixture, you know, a lot of, a lot of elder, well, I shouldn't say elderly, but there are a lot of people in their sixties, seventies, eighties. There's even a couple that lives next door to me. They just had a, you know, a baby. We'd like having this quiet neighborhood. Concern I have, you know, I just recent, when I purchased a house, I had no idea. It's two years ago. I had no idea of this development. And I just recently learned in the last couple of months in talking to my neighbor, Mr. Sharp, that this road was going to come out, right in, empty out into Roble Road. So you're going to have all kinds of traffic, you know, from this. So I, I don't want to take up a whole lot of here, time here tonight, but I also wanted to perhaps share my contact information and get more details on this. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate all public comment. And one understands the, the difficulty of those issues, but I really shouldn't be commenting on public comments. I was going, no, I, I am a chatty Cathy, and it is a fault, so I'm going to just be quiet. Thank you. So, seen no other public comment? Oh, please.
Hello, my name's Danny Minners. I'm involved in the S V One Ten partnership. And I just wanted to say I'm a lifetime resident and deeply involved in Topeka County my whole life. Forefathers before me and the project we're working on and have been working on. I feel proud of what we're trying to do there, and I think I was involved in a small little subdivision in the city limits. And we named it off Minner's Way, of course, for my parents. And if anybody wants to look at those homes and what we did there, I, I think that might give you a better idea of what we plan to do here. So I'm in favor of the project, and I hope you extend it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Minner. So, now, I thought I heard a mic do something. So with that, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. The, any further discussion before motions? Yes, please.
It's actually for Mr. Popovich. I have a duplex on Bay Meadows Road, and the road is completely destroyed, and that's outside of the city. So I went to the county and I asked them if they would repave it, and they said they had a policy that if the developer put in asphalt that was too thin, then they would not adopt that road. And it seems like there are a few neighborhoods in this county that are guilty of the developer doing that. Do you have any way of ensuring that that wouldn't happen with this development five, ten years down the road?
Actually, I can comment.
Okay, great.
These are going to be public roads, and they're going to be accepted by the city. So your city. These are gonna be public roads, and they're gonna be accepted by the city. So your city engineer will be working very diligently with them, as well as city staff to, and it will be to city standards.
Okay, great.
So then they'll be accepted into the system for ongoing. So this is not a private road situation. This is, these will be public roads.
Thank you.
I have just a couple of small comments, and I'll try not to, I'll try not to be a chatty Cathy. I, I would encourage anyone that know, you know, that has an interest in this to reach out to Mr. Popevich. I, you know, he's really approachable, really likable, very straightforward guy. I can say that personally, talking to him, because we, we've actually bumped heads on a couple of issues in the past. And, you know, we came to a resolution. And, you know, I found him very, very workable. So I, I would really encourage you to talk to him. You know, the other part is, and this is kind of personal with me, cause I've had some empty property around my house that is in the possibility of being used for homes in the future. And then I have to remind myself, I live on a home that used to be an empty spot of land. And I have to remind myself of that. Now, yeah, there's issues with traffic and fire, especially fire now. It scares the crap out of me and everybody else. But as I said before, I think I would talk to Mr. Popovich, because I, I know that after speaking with him on the Washington Fire last year, you know, this is something that's near and dear to his heart. So I'm in, I'm in very much for this project, seeing, you know, especially three-bedroom, maybe some four-bedroom homes in there, especially for somebody who has a lot of kids like myself, for somebody to move in like that. But, you know, we do need more housing up here. We do need more working-class homes up here that aren't a half a million dollars, you know, seven hundred and fifty thousand. I was walking past one of the real estate agencies, and there was a house for one point two million sitting there, and it's like a six-bedroom deal. But, you know, I can't afford that. Definitely couldn't afford that on our city council pay. But I wish I could find a house for a hundred and twenty-five a month. But, you know, the, the reality is, we do need more housing. I think this is a good pro, or I believe this is a good project. And I think it's in an area that will be able to absorb the traffic on the main roads there. I can't blame anyone for having those concerns either. So i- if I was living right there, I, I would have the same concern. So. I think that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
That covered actually some of the different issues that I would have been thrilled to talk about myself. Councilmember Merrill, please.
Not to get too far ahead in the agenda, but I, and Rochelle, this would actually be a question you could probably answer regarding, like, we're, we're talking about redoing some of the accessory dwelling units and how there is a provision for, if you develop that, there, there's parking required. I would be shocked if there wasn't some sort of a provision for new developments, including some sort of on-lot parking as opposed to on-street.
They're required to have on, on parcel parking.
Yeah.
And they're big parcels.
Yeah, there's lots of room for parking.
They have lots of room, and most of the streets are also accommodated. Depending, there is one street that is one way that the fire chief has a concern with parking along it. But other than that, the rest of them are, they'll have parking available. I just wanted to clarify, there is two streets in and out of the subdivision. Not everything, there is one entrance right off of Shaw's Flat Road, and then there's a second entrance off of Roble Road.
I missed that.
That goes into Roble. So there is two ways in and out of the subdivision, not just one. And that is a fire requirement.
Right.
Especially with all the new state regulations, that you have to have two accesses and exits. So, so there are two ways. Everything doesn't funnel into, onto one street.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that clarification.
Have a pin? Cause I have six things on the agenda following this, so you're not gonna be able to talk to me till like nine o'clock tonight. Can I give you, can I give you the phone number where you can reach me, so you can ask me any questions that you guys want? It's five-three-two-three-five-zero-eight, extension number two. But you'll never be able to talk to me tonight, because we'll be here forever.
Cause we've.
Okay?
We've barely started.
It's Rochelle.
Rochelle Kellogg.
I'm the only one pretty much soon in community development, so it won't be hard to find me.
And my, my only other comment would be including, kinda doing like a Morning Star Drive treatment. I remember when it was completely undeveloped and, you know, like it was like forty, thirty-five, forty miles an hour speed limit. Now it's down to twenty-five. There's all sorts of signs saying, hey, slow down. There's kids playing here. And my grandfather was actually the community member that started a petition to get a stop sign put in at the intersection of Morning Star Court and Morning Star Drive. So just as part of the planning, maybe that's something that we could look into in getting people to slow down. It might not solve the issue, but, you know, at least we could say, hey, you know, it's, it's posted, you know?
So, in general.
I think that would be required to mark those school bus stops, you know, with proper signage and everything too, so.
Thank you, sir. But at this point, I am going to close public comment, or I already have, I think. I thought so, but sometimes I forget things. So I would like to un-comment that balancing the, the interest of current owners is always something that is important to us. But we desperately in this city need to also look forward to having someplace that our children can buy and homes for them to go to, because we are, have been in a position of almost no, no homes for decades. And we desperately need more. So I strongly support this project. And with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve this extension, this two-year extension of the Questa Heights subdivision, best tentative subdivision map.
I make a motion to approve the two-year extension for the Questa Heights subdivision.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Say no. Any abstentions? With that, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And thank you all for coming and being present. Next item, public hearing is the introduction of Title Ordinance Number Eight-Niner-Six, Amending Chapter Seventeen Point Five-Five, Second Dwelling Units on Residential Parcels of Title Seventeen, Zoning of the Sonora Municipal Code by repealing it in its entirety and replacing it with a new Chapter Seventeen Point Five-Five, Accessory Dwelling Units, and waive the first reading. Ms. Kellogg, please.
So I, I thought there'd be a lot more public, and I was gonna go into a lot of detail. So what I'm going to do is kinda give this a cursory once-over, because it is a long night, and we still have a long ways to go. I will be happy to answer any questions that you guys have, any clarifications that you need. But let me just quickly go over just some basics about it. Is that okay, Mayor?
I think that's a great, we've all read the material.
Yeah.
And, and we can perhaps direct some public comment questions if they have specific questions that they haven't seen addressed to you, and that will perhaps.
And I can answer questions. So, cause I know it does get confusing, and I don't want to disregard that, but I know we got a long night ahead of us. So as stated in the staff report, we did this basically because the state required the city to relook at our accessory dwelling unit ordinance and make sure that we were in compliance with state laws. The state has really lessened the requirements for having additional units on individuals' property. And we had to come into compliance. And so we did a full review. We worked with our planners from CSG that worked with me and did a quick look of what others were doing. And we also looked at the seriousness that we have in the city, which is our access in our high fire zones, to try to bring it into something that would meet some of the requirement, things that we need as a city to make sure that people can hopefully safely get in and out of our neighborhoods without having cars all over the street, which we know is a problem in some of our, our neighborhoods. So under the state law, there's two accessory dwelling, well, there's two units that people automatically can have on a single-family lot. They can have, if they live there, they can have an accessory dwelling unit, and they can have a junior accessory dwelling unit. The junior is limited to five hundred square feet, and it has to be within the footprint of either their house or their garage. If it's an attached garage, but they have to live there. You're gonna ask me, after they create that junior ADU, how's the city gonna guarantee that they're gonna still live there, right? They're not. They're not. The cities are not. So once that person moves on or they sell it, yes, it could be a case where, you know, it has a different owner and they're not living there. But, but it is a junior accessory. They, we are required to allow it. And so we will move forward with looking at options as to recording something against the property or looking at that for junior ADU. So, but the requirements for junior ADU is they have to live there right now. That's the requirement. And they can have up to five hundred square feet, and it has to be under the umbrella of their house. So they have to renovate a part of their house to have it. The restrict, junior ADUs can have what they call an efficiency kitchen, which they don't have to have a regular kitchen. They can have, and they can have shared bathroom facilities with the main house. So that's why the idea is it's supposed to be a unit that people live there, and then they would share that, those facilities. So that, that's the crux of why, how they set up a junior ADU. That doesn't mean a junior ADU can't have a full kitchen. They could do that. They could just make it a smaller ADU. But it doesn't necessarily has to be, and it gives them a little bit more flexibility. The other thing they can have is an ADU. They can have an attached ADU, or they can have a detached ADU. An attached ADU under our code, as long as they're outside of all of our setbacks, is fifty percent of the existing house or a thousand square feet, whichever is greater. And so, or whichever, I mean, a thousand, up to a thousand square feet. So a thousand is the maximum they can have, or fifty percent of their existing house. So if their existing house is fifteen hundred square feet, they can only have seven hundred and fifty square feet for their ADU. Detached can be up to twelve hundred square feet, but it, again, has, that's within all the setbacks. And there has to be a ten-foot separation between the units. Or up to, if they can prove a hardship, they can go to six feet between all the structures. So that's just on a standard ADU, and pretty much that's what we allow today. The only difference is we don't have the option for a junior ADU. We also, under the state law, we have to allow smaller ADUs within four feet of the property line. So under our code, up to eight hundred square feet, if they go, are up to a hundred square feet ADU, they can have within four foot of the property line. So that, and they can go up no greater than sixteen feet high on that and four feet off the property line. But again, they're restricted to eight hundred square feet. If they have an accessory dwell, accessory building on there, a garage, a shop, they can convert part of that to a residence. And as long as it stays within the footprint, even if it's on the property line, we would have to allow that. But again, it's restricted to a thousand square feet, no more than that, if, within that building. So the other thing that the state had said was that we can't require them to create parking as part of this. And if they convert a garage, that you can't require them to replace the parking that's lost in the garage. We made the case, case to the state. We haven't heard back from them. We've actually directed it to them twice. I will tell you that I was at a meeting in Stanislaus County, and the director for Stanislaus County said that they sent their ADU ordinance over two years ago to HCD and still haven't heard a comment from them. So I don't think we're probably gonna hear from them. But they, and what, the way this ordinance is written is if they're in our high-fire severity zone, or a very high, which is about probably eighty-five percent of the city, they have to accommodate the parking on site. If they're gonna do this, they have to accommodate the parking. And if they convert a garage, they have to replace it. They can do tandem parking, which means you can park one right after the other. And we don't have a, that's allowed under the code. It's allowed under the state as well. But they have to accommodate it. So they can't create a unit and just put everybody out on our city streets if they're in the high-fire severity zone. And if they, for a standard ADU, even outside of that, they are required to create parking. But if they are within certain parameters as provided under here, and as the state requires, they can, we, they can just use public parking out on the streets. So where we could get parking off the street, we did it. And where we had to allow it, we kept it in. Where we, we allowed them to go to a thousand square feet for a attached, we allowed them twelve hundred feet for a detached. We limited the size if we had to allow them close to the setbacks. But we'll reward them if they stay outside of our setbacks by being able to have a bigger unit. And so that's kind of the gist of what you guys have in here. That's the idea of it. There are straight exemptions that we have to provide for, we have to allow for, we have to allow multifamily. We have to give them one of two options. They can have two units, or they can convert unusable space within them that's not habitable right now. They can convert laundry rooms. They could convert, they could convert like garage areas. They can convert, if they have like a janitorial area, some public space area in their buildings, they can convert those. But that's limited. They can only create up to twenty-five percent more units in their, in their area. And they have to accommodate the parking. So those are the requirements that are in there. It's, that was it in a very quick nutshell. There is a ton of stuff in here. There's a lot of requirements on how they have to be laid out. One of the things that is new at the state level is, because it was an issue before, is they can't occupy, they can't get occupancy on the ADU until they have completed the main house. That wasn't that way before in the code, and it got really muddy. We had already established that policy here, cause it didn't make sense to us. But otherwise, but now the state code's really clear on that, that they have to. You can build them at the same time, but you gotta get occupancy on that prime unit first, before you can get occupancy on your ADU. It can be a modular. We just did an ADU project with two modulators. They have the primary modular, and then his mom's moving in, has a second one. And as long as it's on a foundation in the city, it can be a tiny home, can be a manufactured home. But it has to be on a foundation, cause that's the requirements of the city, and that's the requirements of this code. So like I said, if you guys didn't have any specific questions, but that's kinda, and then, I don't know if Doug wants to weigh in on anything in here. The biggest thing that we did different was dealing with parking, cause that's not what the state originally intended.
Thank you, Councilor. Questions or?
Yeah, just a.
Councilor White, did you want to add anything to that, or?
No, I mean, I just, I mean, I, I think we should just look at this as a state mandate that we're just trying to comply with. And we looked at opportunities to make it a Sonora-specific where we can.
Thank you.
I found it interesting.
Merrill.
I found it interesting to include the no-lot subdivision, so this isn't a way for someone to go in and, you know, like sell off a, a piece of their land without city approval. But there was another, it was, I think, under seventeen point five-five-point-zero-eight-zero. It would be Items F and G under that for manufactured home, tiny homes, and movable units. It just says, they're, they're admissible if they are permanently attached. And I, I can see that for like, you know, manufactured homes. But what, what would that look like for RVs or like fifth-wheel trailers?
So in the city, you can't live in RV or a fifth-wheel trailer. So you'd never be able to occupy that in the city.
City-specific thing to us.
Here as well.
Okay.
You, it had, in order to live in something, it has to be on a foundation. So they can have a tiny home. If they take it off the wheels and put it on a foundation, they can have.
Permanently.
But.
Permanently.
Okay.
Permanent, it has to be a permanent foundation. We don't allow people to live in RVs, trailers, anything like that.
So like a concrete pad with full hookups that you could just drive your, your RV up on that is not permanent. Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilwoman Cruz.
Can we put a cap on how many of these are allowed?
No.
So, and that, if. Mayor Pro Tem Sager, please take the floor. I had a comment.
Going back to the very beginning. So is this, is this an either-or, or both situation? So you can have an ADU or a JD. So, you can have an ADU or a JADU or both? You can have both of them?
On a single family lot, but only if you live there.
Okay. Wow.
If you don't live there, if, if it's a rental property, we, we still allow it on a rental property, but you can't have a junior ADU.
Okay.
You can only have an ADU.
But if you, if you meet the requirements, and that would be under 17.55.040, that's something I actually wanted to ask about as well. It says, uh, you can have the, the, the ADU and the JADU if the requirements are met.
Yep.
Okay.
Sure. Okay.
Councilman Hawkins.
One of the things I love about this city is parking requirements. Pretty much anywhere else you go in California, um, there's not the parking requirements. And you go through the neighborhoods and like the cars are just thick. And there's no yards because many of those yards are filled in with cement or asphalt and there's cars parked there too. So, I had the recent experience with my sister-in-law who lives in San Diego. And their, their home is a duplex now, even though it wasn't created as a duplex. And they just have two cars. There's two of them. They have two cars along with the 5,000 cars that are within the one block. And there's no yards. Um, and it creates a lot of problems, not just for fire vehicles and others to get through, but where's all your rainwater go? So, that's another reason why we have areas off the street to park and that sort of thing.
I think the only saving grace that we have is that high fire severity zone. Not that we are proud of being in a high fire severity zone, but, um, they would have, they'd be hard pressed to say that wasn't a legitimate health and safety reason for the city.
So, I had, am I correct in my presumption that the whole purpose behind this is to just create more housing? Uh, sort of, I won't, don't want to say on the cheap, but just to get around the issues that Mr. Popovich is dealing with and that type of things because we are so short of housing in California?
Yeah, I would say it's a way to cri- because it's a ministerial approval. So, um, it's approved at the staff level. Basically, they just have to meet building code requirements as long as they stay within the parameters of what's in this ordinance. They really don't deal with us very much, other than the building code side. So, yeah, it is a quicker, much quicker way to build houses. And, you know, I, I have to say, you know, I got two boys and I know how expensive rentals are right now. And one of them lives on a cabin on our property. So, and, you know, him and his wife and his new little baby. So, it's, it's not an, um, it's not, it's not a reality to say that there's not a housing problem because we know that rentals are ridiculously for what these kids are making at their ages. Um, but, um, but it does take a lot of control out of the local level. And it, you know, it is, it's, it is a regional statewide mandate that, that they're doing to create housing. Um, this, I will say, since I've been with the city, um, even when Ed was still here, I mean, the city has always, um, supported ADUs. Um, it's just, we want them out of the setback. We want to have parking. I mean, you know, you wanted them to be, yeah, you wanted them to have the, you couldn't put three units and you never could do multifamily. But now you can.
In the spirit of California's desire and need for more housing, we probably ought to approve this. And with that, did, I haven't asked for public comment yet. I would like to go to public comment on Zoom, suspecting that I'll have at least one speaker. Wow, not seeing any, any public comment from the chambers.
Surprise, Mark.
Oh, if you would, if you would just sit down right there.
No, I, I, I was telling you that I don't want to say anything.
Oh, oh, it wasn't, uh-
You're great, Beazey.
Beazey, I'm, thank you. I'm a little weak on jokes, especially when I'm sitting up here sweating with nerves and so, thank you.
Happy to hear from my friend, Mr. Popovich. Hi, Greg.
My name's Greg Popovich and I build ADUs. I've built about 60 of them now and have, uh, that's what I do for a living other than development. By the way, thank you for the extension. Uh, I'd like to commend Rochelle. She's done some phenomenal, incredible research. There's one caveat, there's a couple of caveats I'll talk to Chief New about and, and some of the different things that can help make these better, safer and create a little more parking. One of the things with the parking that other cities are implementing is that if you are to take your parking away from your lot, which is permitted, if you ever go to do a remodel on your home or increase the size of your home, you need to get that parking back. So, it may be, uh, wise to inform people that come in for ADUs that once they take that parking away, that home won't be eligible to be expanded or remodeled or, or put together. So, there's a whole bunch of little caveats that go with different cities, different counties that can be implemented here, especially with the, the zero lot line thing. Um, fire departments in other cities have said, "We need three-foot clear space, period. Otherwise, you will be sprinkling your ADU." It says right in the statutes that you don't have to do it if the main house isn't done. But life, safety and fire, uh, overrode that in many, many, many areas. So, it's something to look into as well for, for the fire issue and the life safety issues. So, those are things to explore. I thought I'd bring up the parking to you in that it will limit any type of future expansion to that home once that person goes and sells that home. If someone wants to expand that home, they will have to recreate that offsite or onsite parking, usually covered.
Thank you very much. Good point. Thank you. And is that, don't worry. There you go. I was, I just making presumptions that it's for the state of California and not just some. With that, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the council.
You know, we are in a pickle when it comes to, uh, housing statewide. And we had this problem in the 1930s during the Dust Bowl. Everyone came to California because California at that time was a land of opportunity. And then, right after World War II, but there was, there was housing shortages, but there was major housing booms, major housing building. And, um, I really wish our state legislators would look back in history instead of being blinded to it and see what we did right and see what we did wrong. So, with that, I'll move to approve, uh, introduced by Title Ordinance Number 897, amending Chapter 1755, Second Dwelling Units on Residential Partials, Title 17, zoning of the Sonora Municipal Code by repealing it in its entirety and replacing it with a new Chapter 1755, accessory dwelling units and waive first reading.
I'll second.
All in favor? Signify with an aye.
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 Any opposition? Nay. Any abstentions? Not seeing any. It passes unanimously. With that, I am going to take the liberty of calling for a five-minute recess. We've been here for three hours already and maybe here for another couple. We will reconvene, well, let's make it seven, at eight o'clock on the nose.
Andy and I have been here so-
Hello. Call us to resume the meeting. And with that, I should have, of course, been here. Now I get to go to new business. I was so excited about this. So, item 16, to consider the approval of our 39th Annual Historic Downtown Sonora Christmas Parade on Friday, November 25th at 6:00 PM sharp, it says. Uh, Rochelle Kellogg, Community Director.
It has never, we have never started late in the 26 years-
Of course not.
I've been here. So, um, this is for the Christmas parade. I will tell you that, um, it's scheduled for November 25th at 6:00 PM. This is all hands on deck. Um, I will also tell you, your hands are getting lighter and lighter because Teru scrambling to find volunteers and, um, working with other agencies to get everything staffed, and he's left the room. Um, but we are looking at, we use those water barricades. I don't know if you guys saw those during the roundup parade. Um, so, where we could actually close the street with them. They put water in and the police, uh, fire department fills them up. Amy, how long did it take you guys to fill them? Right, and I think Mike said it was seconds when they opened up the, um, yeah, to, for the water to clear, so, um, so that they could move them out of the street. So, we're going to look at where we can fill in with that. We will, um, have to expend some funds probably and more if, if we can't fill it up with bodies. So, um, but we are, uh, moving forward. We're planning on it. Um, we, um, uh, have this closure that you guys have in front of us. This is what we need to present to Caltrans, uh, as part of our packet. So, we want to get going on that. Um, and that is the needed for the resolution, um, versus just an approval from you guys. The only thing that's changed on the resolution that you guys have seen in the, have from the past is that, um, we are going to go ahead and close part of Snell Street as well at 4:00. In the past, we only closed School Street at 4:00 to stage the parade. But we've had a lot of instances with people trying to drive back against the staging of the parade up School Street. They come up Snell and they, and, um, we had a, a not very nice person out, out there last year that was tangling with one of our firefighters that was trying to keep them from driving up the road. So, so, we figure if we close from Bonanza to Green, that gives us like a T there and that'll, they won't be able to get anywhere near that area except for coming down Washington Street. Um, and so, if they're dropping off their kid or supplies or anything like that, they're not going to be able to get to that end of the parade route. Because once we start lining up, you guys that have been out there, we've got semis, we've got trucks, we've got, and there is no way it's safely, and kids everywhere for somebody to drive through that without getting somebody hurt. So, so, uh, we did that. That's a change on that. And then, the other changes, we took, um, we had, used to have three bus stops for transit. Uh, this year, uh, they're going to just do Lion Street, which is fine. Um, it works out well on Lion Street. It's out of the hubbub of the downtown area and they'll do drop up and pick up on Lion Street. So, um, we only have two, one closure area for the transit location and that's Lions between Stewart and Shepherd. And, um, we really appreciate, Darren's here tonight for everything else, but we really appreciate their support. I know a lot of people use that bus to come down for the Christmas parade. So, um, so it's greatly appreciated by the community as well as the city to have all that traffic and the people taken care of in that dr- in that fashion. The other thing that we took off is for years, uh, you guys used to do the closures for the, uh, craft fair down at the, at the fairgrounds. There isn't going to be a craft fair this year, so we didn't need to include that closure in the, um, resolution. So, that has also been removed. Um, and then, we also are closing the parking lot up by, um, Elkin and Wykoff, um, or Snell and Wykoff, sorry. Um, I don't long to Red Church there because we, um, will have like the posse with the horses there. We'll also have the veterans there so they don't have to walk all the way down and all the way back up. So, it's a nice little location where we can. And we've done it in the past, but we didn't include it with the resolution. We just did it outside of that, um, under our normal procedures. But, uh, we went ahead and put it in, so it was real clear, um, that we're going to eliminate those areas. And that's for parking and that starts at 3:00, um, on that day. Um, uh, along, uh, Washington Street, parking lot, parking, uh, lot closures, um, they all start at 4:00. Um, and then, the parking as well off of Washington Street. You guys know, um, those of you that have been around for a long time, uh, we, years ago, we took the parking off of Washington Street. Um, in the past, it is the busiest shopping day, so it's kind of hard because the businesses are, so, we, we try to do the parking off of Washington St- Street as late as we can. But 4:00 really is our drop dead for, um, the police to do, if there's anybody that has to have their car moved or, or move, you know, get ahold of them to get their car out of there. So, um, so that is it for the parade. There's four things we're asking you to approve. We're asking you to approve that we have it. We're asking you to approve the resolution with all their no parking and our, uh, road closure locations. And then, we're asking the mayor or the Mayor Pro Tem to represent the city in the Christmas parade, um, this year. And, um, and I'm just letting you guys know, next year will be my last parade and I'm riding with Santa at the end, so I can, I've already got that arranged. I told Santa I'm riding with him on my last hurrah. And so, I can wave goodbye to everybody as I leave on the parade with Santa. So, there you go. And then, um, also to release the three-hour parking in the Zone A. And I included the map because nobody knows where Zone A is. Um, so that way, you guys would know where the, that means. So, um, that's kind of a holiday gift, um, the city's done for, since I've been here to, um, uh, remove the parking restrictions, um, on, from November 14th through January 2nd within that downtown corridor to encourage people to come down and shop. Um, so that's all I have for you guys on that.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff from the council? Yes. No, I, so, thank you very much. Do we have any public comment from Zoom? It's getting late, obviously. So, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council chambers and ask if we have any public comment. It's getting a little thin here too, so I'm going to make a-
Let's ask if we have any-
A very hasty, hasty evaluation that we have none and bring it back to the council. Any further discussion or motions or, so, before we get there, I, should I be present? And I will actually endeavor to do so. I will happily, gratefully and joyfully join the parade. And should I not be here? I hope that our Vice Mayor, Ann Sagerstrom, will be able to do so because you, one never knows what life might bring.
I, well, I hope that by that time, we will not have any fires, but, uh-
Well, I'm not thinking of fires, but heck, I could be struck by a car or- Life is uncertain. You got to enjoy every day.
Well, I move that we, uh, that we consider approval of the 39th Annual Historic Downtown Sonora Christmas Parade on Friday, November 25th at 6:00 PM sharp and that you will be in good health to, um, walk, walk.
I fully expect that.
I'll second it.
Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just for the record, we're voting on 16, 1, 2 and 3 all at one time.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Counselor? Any abstentions? Oops, oh.
Oh.
Oh, okay. Are we good now?
Yes.
Okay, we're, we're moving forward.
So, uh, with no nays and a-
And so, there were no nays and were there any abstentions? None. Thank you very much. So, that was the, that was good. Thank you. Number 17, consider awarding the construction contract to low bidder Dirt Dynasty, Inc., for the Washington Stockton Corridor Downtown Transit and Accessibility Improvement Project and authorize the city administrator to sign the construction agreement and all related project documents.
As with the ADU ordinance, um, you guys have seen staff reports. Um, you, um, I've kept you in the loop as this project has progressed over the, God only knows how many years. Um, and for those of you, uh, are new, uh, we've, and my staff reports and my monthly reports, I've kept you in the loop as well as how we've progressed. Um, thanks to Melissa and Darren, uh, we were able to secure the additional funding that we need in shop funds, uh, from Caltrans to allow the project to move forward. Uh, we did have only one bidder, that was Dirt Dynasty. We did have six construction firms attend the pre-bid. We anticipated more. I know that, um, a couple that talked to me were concerned about the location. Um, and they just, um, they were busy enough to take on such a challenge. Um, so, uh, we do meet our DVE goals. I have submitted everything to Caltrans to get to the point where they, we are ready to award everything that's ahead of you tonight, this and the next two items, so that we can move forward.
I'm sorry, Rochelle, what is DVE? I, I wanted to ask you that because-
Disadvantaged Business Enterprises. So, for the state, there's goals that are set on who, um, hiring requirements. Um, and so, um, our goal on this part of the project was 30%. And, uh, Dirt Dynasty is a DVE, which really helps because that really gets us, uh, that makes us look good with the state because we hit a high, much higher goal. Um, the other thing that you guys are considering, at the time you guys were adopting your budget, we did not include this because we had no clue what direction this project was going to go at that point. Um, so now, we do need to add it into the budget if it's approved. It does require a four-fifth vote. The other thing is, um, the next two items are going to be tied to that budget amount that we're approving in this, um, this, uh, under this, uh, item. So, um, so I'll refer to that- So um, so I'll refer to that when we get to this, those two staff reports. But I want to let you know, it's all included in that one amount of $3,383,525. That's how much revenue we have coming in and that's how much expenditure, expenditures that we'll have going out. We need to get the project done. We need to wrap it up by, um, some of the funding has to be spent by June. So we'll be on a tight deadline to get uh, this project rolling. And then um, everything has to be wrapped up and done by September. So that's where we are on that. So um, unless you guys have any questions, staff is recommending a, uh, approval of the project and approval of the budget addition. Yes. Yep. Yeah, yeah.
After five years, yes, it's really quick. So.
The vein of Maya's existence.
It won't be much longer.
No.
In fact, you can go out with a bang. So, any questions for staff from the council? No, we're pretty familiar with this. So there, I had had one question because the, and it's, I was pretty confident, but the shop, minor, PT, MSI, MISA, STIP, RIP, and CMAC all meant almost less than nothing to me, except really being big letters. So my presumption was, but I asked, is that this is all coming from different funding sources outside the city's coffers?
Yes.
And that basically most of those are Caltrans or uh, are indeed Caltrans or our, our friends in the county who are also helping us with this, for which we are eternally grateful. And uh, but I want the, I want our constituents to know, should anybody be listening, that this is not us taking another million point three or so out of the general fund to put into a project, but in fact, it is coming, money is coming from outside the city. And that too, some people should be an important distinction.
Thank you for making that on us. I was wondering myself what shop and all these acronyms meant.
So.
So I, well, here.
We can answer if you want us to, to answer.
If I could just answer. My point of view was their actual meanings probably were not that critical to my knowledge, just that they were funding sources from outside the city.
Yes, and I, I totally agree. And that's a really good point to make to the community that's listening.
Anyway, so you don't need to go run them down.
I'm sure Darren can tell you whatever one of them is.
I'm sure he can, but we probably.
But it's not ours. So there you go.
And we, we don't need to promptly forget another dozen acronyms. Heck, I didn't know what the D, DE was either. Yes.
And uh, if I may, just to do my diligence as a representative of our constituents, um, there was a concern that was raised regarding uh, maintenance on the improvement. And I've been led to believe that there is an agreement with Caltrans regarding.
So we have a maintenance agree with, with Caltrans for when the facility, any of the new facilities that go in will be a maintenance of the city. However, we also have a cross agreement that we're working on with Darren. He's already got it in his hands. Um, he'll be responsible for all the transit, either through an agreement with the city for the public works to maintain it and then they pay the city, or he would do it, they would do it another way. But with the, the way that the agreement's written is public works would do any maintenance and then, or we would see that the maintenance is done, whether it's an outside agency or, or contractor. And then the TCTC will do all the reimbursements back to the city for all the transit-related facilities.
So that's uh, essentially budgeted and taken care of.
So then the side, the city's real main responsibility would be sidewalks, being curbs, gutters, sidewalks, storm drain stuff, which is ours anyway, cause we're storm drain. Um, and the little, the street lights that go in, um, anything, any maintenance that would be required on that. Um, because it has the decorative lighting, that would be the city. Um, but anything transit-related Darren's um, has agreed that they would take that on as their maintenance requirement as far as costs.
Thank you for that clarification.
And there have been comments to, to the effect that dealing with maintenance should be something that we ought to be considering taking on willingly if it's, involves beautification and making this a more attractive place, that we can make a Stalin-esque, absolutely maintenance-free environment pretty easily, but that's probably not in the city's best interest. And so it puts us in a position where obviously we're struggling for funding across the board. But this is one of the things where I think quality of life is one of the arguments in favor of pushing for measure Y, that we can make this a more desirable place to live and visit.
I would agree wholeheartedly with that.
We will, and I'm sure we will get them.
I, I actually do have some myself, but that's a conversation for another time.
And with that, um, discussions a little bit behind us, is there any public comment on Zoom? Quiet this evening. Any public, so closing public comment on Zoom? Is there any public, there is public comment. We look forward to it. In the future.
I've got a long speech ahead of me.
Mr. Grossi, we, well, and, and we deserve it, but, but we will endeavor to keep things a little, I mean with required visitation that maybe earlier in the, in the evening would be welcome. So anyway, thank you for being here. It's good to see you.
I wanna start off by just thanking Rochelle. This project has been tough. I somehow feel if she dies an early death, I had a role in it. But I think she'll be fine. Um, she worked really hard on a, this project, it's less than optimum. It's got a lot of compromises. There is lots of ideas coming from Caltrans, board members, the public that she had to navigate. I think we got a project that'll benefit the city significantly. The city, uh, this project will replace the project in Courthouse Park. Uh, years ago, we were requested by the city council to start working towards an alternative location that is ADA compliant, you know? Sonora is our number one location for transit ridership. Uh, Walmart is obviously our number one draw, but downtown is, is a close second. Uh, many of the people come here to work or shop or take advantage of many of the different public facilities. But also a lot of residents of Sonora use it. A lot of those residents are low-income folks, seniors with mobility problems. So those ADA uh, accessible sidewalks and whatnot are very important and it's long overdue, so we're happy about that. Um, the project itself, uh, won't just serve Colmen County Transit, but also I want to remind folks, it'll serve yards buses. In the summertime, uh, the 120 route is the number one route into Yosemite for yards. Uh, it's served by three round trips a day. Oftentimes those buses are nearly full of 30 to 40 passengers. Oftentimes those folks are staying right in downtown Sonora. So we really like that. Uh, and it's of course, it saves your residents the hassle of driving all the way up there and back. Uh, the ski bus, we run the ski bus during the winter time. It starts up when the snow flies uh, and continues till the season wraps up. Uh, downtown Sonora, we do get a fair amount of people staying at California ends for people getting those discounted tickets at Save Mart and then getting on the bus and going. Good location for it. Personally, a big fan of the ski bus. Um, we are working on uh, tour bus operators possibly using this site. Uh, I've seen them in the past, uh, stopping downtown at Courthouse Park, letting out 35, 40 people. They go downtown, they shop, they eat lunch, they get back on the bus two hours later and they continue onward. Certainly that's a good thing from an economic standpoint that Melissa and I are gonna work on to make sure those tour buses and public transit kinda can work it out and not be conflicting with each other. Uh, longer term, we're looking at using this as a stop. They'll link up with some of the transit services in the valley. Uh, longer term, we see uh, the Altamont commuter express being extended down to Modesto. Uh, Sacramento Transit or Rapid Transit is actually planned to go down to Modesto. And then longer term, God willing, and the, and many billions of dollars later, the high-speed rail might even connect up in that way. So having interregional transit from Sonora down there would be a big deal.
That's a B, a big B.
A big B.
Yes, not, you said millions, I thought. I'm going deaf.
Do that out there, okay. Well.
So, okay.
So that's about it. Uh, just wanted also uh, thank Caltrans, be one more time for the million dollars they kicked in. Uh, the funding, we talked about a little bit, a lot of acronyms. I could go through those, but I won't bore you with it. But the one thing that's important is the public transit modernization and whatever fund. It's the longest acronym in the world. Yeah.
Is that the PT MISA?
Yeah.
Public transport.
PT MISEA.
Yeah.
Um, that is part of SB one, which is a mandated, uh, or that was approved by the California legislator. This is a piece of it that goes specifically to public transit. So we're happy to spend some of those monies here for this project. Um, again, thank you, Caltrans, one more time. Uh, they, without that extra million dollars they kicked in at the end, we wanted to get the job done. That's it.
I'm sorry. Further, any questions from the council? Because I have one, but.
Go, go ahead.
So I, you sort of alluded to it, but it wasn't a hundred percent clear and I'd like to nail it down. These were designed to accommodate tour buses, these bus stops, correct?
They are large enough.
Yes, they, that, we put that into it from the very beginning and really wanted to keep that.
I hope if we build it, they will come.
I just, that's the whole, that's the essence of public transport, right? Yep, good.
So this whole thing goes back, you and I were talking about it a couple months back, I believe. Um, this whole thing goes back to over a decade ago to um, former councilman and mayor Bill Canning, the first term. I remember him talking to me about this. That's how long ago this was. So when, yeah, yeah, exactly. And it, and it was right about that time. And I remember him and I, cause I like to play devil's advocate, as you well know. But um, we had debated on this issue a little bit. But I think that whenever something is brought forth, if there's any kind of ribbon cutting, he should be invited, because I remember this, he was a big champion of this and pushing this forward. So just throwing that out there.
I think a note to Rochelle Kellogg would perhaps be the first, I forget things, as I mentioned.
Or I don't hear them.
Inviting Bill Canning to the ribbon cutting and yes.
When we, when we cut that ribbon, I'm gonna be happy to see it go.
Yeah. You are not the only one. I will also celebrate with Tim Miller, who has been, who tried husbanding this through and I, I spoke with him today.
He sent me a text message today. Hey.
Get on it. Okay. Any further questions for staff? Or, I mean, no, this is public comment. Closing public comment. Any further comments from our council? And I would love to entertain a.
Move to approve.
Thank you very much. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Please say nay. Any abstentions? Seeing none, it passes unanimously, five zero. Thank you very much, council and staff. Mr. Grossi, for your time and enthusiastic help. This is a project that I believe will help Sonora both economically and with our public transport needs for decades. Thank you, of course, Rochelle.
I'm sorry, I'm just waiting for the next item.
Well, I know that you are, but I mean, I have, I have been trying to help us get this over the finish line, it seems like for years. And, and I want to just wax and bathe in the beauty of the moment for another two seconds and that's it. Please take the floor. Thank you. Uh, or I guess I could read it off and announce it. So is that going to be the resolution awarding construction? Yes, okay. Consider.
Construction engineering.
Okay. Well, cause that was the four-fifths vote required for the, what we just passed, correct? Yes. And it's lovely to see it unanimous. Uh, consider approval of resolution number 09-19-2022-C awarding the Construction Management Engineering Services Agreement for the Washington Stockton Corridor Downtown Transit and Accessibility Improvement Project to Unico Engineering, Inc. and authorizing the city administrator to execute the agreement and all related project documents. Adam Kellogg.
Thank you. So um, due to the fact that the city doesn't have an engineer that's a staff person, um, our city engineer doesn't qualify, cause he is a contracted um, engineer. Um, not that he would do this on this project anyway, but um, because of that, um, we had to go out for, with an RFP process to procure a construction engineer for the project. This person will be the one that does the daily, um, oversees the project daily. Um, they have to be an engineer. They have to review the plans. They have to make sure that things are getting built as per the plans. If there's any discussion about the plans, that's the go-to person. That person works directly with me um, and staff or Darren, you know, anybody else. They, they're the in-between. Um, not that we won't work with the contractor, I don't mean that, but that's their job. Um, and that's what this individual will do. We went out with an RFP. They had to be federally procured, which meant there was a specific way we had to do this. So we did it um, and dotted our i's and crossed our t's to do it exactly like we're supposed to. And we'll do the same here on out. Certain things have to be in the contract and certain documents have to be uh, provided to Caltrans. Um, so we have two proposals. We got one from Wilden and one from Unico. We had a committee that was, um, Melissa and Chris and myself, we evaluated them. Um, and I did the um, background, uh, checked on the references. And we um, did score Unico slightly higher than Wilden. After we did that, we requested their cost proposals, because on this procurement process, it has to be qualification-based. It cannot be cost-based. So we can't look at proposals and costs and go, oh, they're cheaper. We're gonna, can't do that. You can't get their cost proposal until you're ready to negotiate with them after they've been proved they're the highest ranking qualified firm. So um, we requested the proposal. We went back and forth on some of the costs. Um, and we finished negotiations and now we're, we submitted everything to Caltrans and we're ready to move forward with awarding. Um, so we are recommending uh, Unico, um, do get, that we, it is awarded to Unico. Uh, Dan Brennan, who's actually local here, would be uh, the engineer on this. So uh, that would be the inspector. Um, and so um, he's willing to work nights and he knows the area, obviously. Um, he was born and raised here. So um, we are, like I said, ready to move forward. We'd like to, we have to get these guys under contract, get the construction um, contract underway um, and then start uh, rocking and rolling on this project. But we have to have a construction engineer, as I can not do it.
Can't.
No. So anyway, um, that's all I have for you guys.
Thank you. Any questions for staff from the council?
Um, I, I suppose I have one, um, in the interest of saving the city uh, money in the foreseeable future. Um, and kind of segueing into measure Y and the reason why we need it. Uh, would it, like, if we, say if we had a city engineer, would uh, like, say these engineering and oversight costs potentially come down as a result of having a person like that employed? Seeing as there will be other projects that they could also lend their expertise to.
Do you see the 500 gray, thousand gray hairs in my head that came about because of this project? Normally what would happen is your city engineer would be the one that would run a project like this, because I'm not an engineer.
As opposed to the community development.
Yeah, so for me, I have had to learn everything as we go, because I'm not an engineer. So normally what would happen is you'd have a city engineer, maybe they'd oversee engineering and public works. That's, you know, um, that's kind of the role you normally see. And then that individual would be the one that runs, that's what happens with Blossom at the county. That's what she does, right? She's an engineer. She oversees these projects and she works with the staff to deliver them and the contractors and stuff. Um, so yeah, I mean, that's, that would be the ideal if the city had somebody. And if not, at least um, have an engineering firm under contract that's federally procured. So you can use them on any of this stuff or have a, a call list that the city works off of. So either, but either way, um, yeah, having somebody um, on board like that would be really helpful to the city. So whatever direction you go, but normally it would never be a community development director who's not an engineer, ever.
Thank you for that.
In the, in the life of this world.
Thank you very much. So. Any public comment on Zoom? Seeing none, any public, further public comment from the chambers? Bringing it back to the council.
Uh, I will move to approve item number eighteen. Consider approval of resolution numbers zero nine nineteen twenty twenty-two dash C, awarding the Construction Management Engineering Services Agreement for the Washington Stockton Corridor Downtown Transit and Accessibility Improvement Project to Unico Engineering Incorporated, and authorizing the city administrator to execute the agreement and all related project documents.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, passes unanimously, wonderful. We are moving ahead, Ms. Kellogg. Those gray hairs are not going to see any new brothers.
That's it, I'm gonna have to keep dying it here. Okay, so, and the last piece of this whole puzzle to get the construction underway is, um, what we, and this is all funded under the three million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand that you guys have put into the budget. So this isn't city funds, this is out of that funding pot. This is the design support during construction services for Kimley Horn. So Kimley Horn did the engineering. This little path, this pot of money is there, so if there is a plan question, not an error on their part, but a question where they need to make an adjustment, um, then that would be what those fundings for. That also, uh, will pay for, they'll have somebody on-site for the pre-construction meeting. And the other thing that comes out of that is that when this is all said and done, we have to submit redline changes to Caltrans. So basically, you call them the as-bilts in the construction world, so that has to go to Caltrans at the end. So that way, if there's any changes, they know what got put on the ground, not what was originally planned, but what's in the ground. Um, and so that includes that for any changes to the plans. And then they submit it off for, at the closeout with the encroachment permit that we have with Caltrans. Um, so, um, staff is recommending approval of this. Um, and this is a not-to-exceed, so if it's not needed, if all of it's needed, but if none of it's needed, none of it's needed. So on the Red Church project, but it was way smaller, we had no redline changes. It was as-built to plan, so we didn't have to, any costs associated with that. But that's, you know, this is a much bigger project. This is a much bigger project.
Um, okay, thank you very much. Any questions for staff? No, we're getting slowly pretty familiar with this. Any public comment from Zoom? Seeing none? Any public comment from the chambers? Also seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Hold it, you said aye and then nay.
I agree with you.
Just keep moving on.
Just keep moving.
Any abstentions? Seeing none, passes unanimously.
All right. Good job. Nice work.
Thank you very much, Rochelle. You deserve a parade yourself. So. Consider approval of an agreement with the county of Toowomee for the joint participation and administration of the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program.
All right, thank you, mayor. This item, I hope, will be very quick, as you have already seen, the PLHA, which is the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Five-Year Plan, which you earlier have directed and then, um, approved the collaborative submittal of the plan with Toowomee County. So I do recommend the joint participation. This is our first step in implementation of that five-year plan. And it is the negotiated terms and conditions between the city of Sonora and Toowomee County to allocate the funds through that program. The city has five years' worth of allocations. We will request a lump sum of three years with the county. They will help us to take the lead on the program, which means they will provide the monitoring, the reporting, and then they will provide the staffing in order for us to meet the project priorities, which are identified also in the staff memo. The subsequent allocations are about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand a year. And our intended use for this, as you have already, um, recommended and supported, was, uh, case management and supportive services. So as you can see in the MOU, uh, we have recommended the hiring of one full-time equivalent position to be funded to expand mobile crisis triage services, assisting law enforcement, um, including our partners at the Sheriff's Department and, uh, Sonora PD. And so I'm really excited to see this moving forward towards implementation. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have. But as mentioned, uh, the plan was already directed to collaborate with the county. Uh, the plan was already submitted, as the priorities have been approved by your council. And this is just formalizing our relationship with the county, so that they could submit the plan to the state. I should also recommend that this is the last opportunity that we have to negotiate this MOU. It does need to go with the application to the state, and the county is up against a critical deadline to get that application submitted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Administrator Eads, any questions for staff from the council? Or I imagine that there are some positive statements that if you don't have them, but we might wait till after public comment, cool. So, okay, moving to public comment, any public comment from Zoom? This, I'm starting to sound like something of a broken record. Any public comment from our council, or from our chambers? Also none. Moving on. Any statements or comments from the council here? Mr. Merrill?
I just, uh, really enjoy seeing, uh, ways that the city and the county can continue to work together to address a severe crisis. Um, I think this is a, a good step forward to that, and not to throw anyone or whoever under the bus, but I do have a list of a bunch of typos in this that I could provide to you after.
That's not the city staff, that was.
That would be me, so I'll go.
Throw Melissa under the bus, then. But I, yeah, if you want to see, I, I got some stuff for you.
Perfect, thank you.
With the exception of the typos, because I, I just always never pay attention to those, mega ditto's on that one. Anytime we can work with the county, I'm, I'm good with.
So. I'm going to take a moment to invite Chief Bender Wheel up here also to perhaps add some comments. When I first came on the council, or shortly thereafter, he started a program of coffee with a council member, not just coffee with cops, both of which are appreciated, and told me of a need that stuck with me. I forget lots of things, but this conversation stuck with me, where having a point person that the police and/or sheriffs or other people eventually, in this, uh, circumstance, could apply to, to take care of, but to help assist with people in need of, of county or city services, but not needing arrest, would save the police time and help deal with them in a better way and come out with better outcomes. And so I wanted your address to this, since this deals with it specifically, and it's good to see it.
Yes, um, and, and very good memory. Because that was a while ago, we talked about it, but, um, I think, I think everyone can understand that we have a lot of contact with, um, people in crisis out, out in the, uh, out in the field. Um, when things go wrong, you know, they call the police, and then we try to, we try to triage out in the field and make referrals. Um, not too long ago, uh, the Department of Public Health, or I'm sorry, um, Health and Human Services, uh, through their Behavior Health Division, uh, created a field response, a field triage-type, uh, opportunity, a person, uh, through a grant opportunity they had. And it was probably, uh, the most effective resource we had for dealing with people that were in crisis, but maybe weren't quite, um, the criteria for, uh, fifty-one fifty, as they say, to take them into custody against their will, to get, to force them into treatment. And so this bridged the gap, uh, having someone come out on scene with us and help, uh, um, evaluate the person. Because we can get the training, our, our field folks can get a lot of training, but we are not, uh, behavior health workers by a long shot. Um, so, uh, you know, to have this opportunity to expand on those, uh, those field response and triage services, I think will, not just the city, as the mayor said, but as, um, you know, the county as well, uh, would benefit the, uh, the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department with our field contacts, um, hopefully off-hours now. Is that?
Yes, thank you very much.
Cover what you were hoping to.
Yeah, I was, and I, that expanded beautifully on, on my very simplified version thereof. So thank you very much, that I think illustrates one of the beauties of being able to partner with the county on this issue. And working with the county is proving more and more fruitful, and I, um, appreciate our staff taking those steps and, and working with them.
And Behavior Health is, has, uh, really, really been good partners, uh, for this, this project. You know, in the past, uh, particularly their field response, uh, Betsy, who's, you know, always out there with us. Um, so, uh, it, it's been a, a really good relationship for several years.
Thank you very much, Chief Vander Wheel. Have I, I haven't asked for public comment on this, have I?
You did.
I did. Well, see, I told you, I forget things, I remember a conversation that seemed important from four or five years ago, and so. With that, I would be looking for a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. And abstentions, abstaining. So passes unanimously, thank you. Consider the appointment of the mayor to serve as community resident representative on the Airport Land Use Commission, and request applications for one community resident representative. So, being a student pilot, who hasn't flown for quite a while, I was very enthusiastic about airport issues and land use issues around and for the airport, which is why I volunteered myself. But we would also benefit from having a community member. And that is where it stands. So, applications would be in order, and do we, we need to approve this, right? This is a motion, correct? Okay, so. I'm not exactly, I'm not exactly staff, but no, I'm not asking, I volunteered myself, it's just that.
I think you need a, you need a city person and then a, a member of the public.
Yes. Or we could have had two members of the public, and maybe in the future, if the future mayor has little interest in the airport, that will be the regime that we choose. But right now, I am interested in it, and so it seemed like a fortuitous moment for me to take the reins and say, please. With that, any questions? Any further questions?
I move that you, um, that you, uh, appoint yourself to the, uh,
Yes.
The Airport Land Use Commission.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro-Tim Sigurdstrom, but first I'm going to ask for public comment. So, public comment from Zoom? It's possible. Public comment from the chambers? Lots of smiling faces, but no comments. So bringing it back to the council, I guess I'm looking for a motion, and if you want to just repeat it.
Okay, I, I.
Oh, okay, great.
Thank you.
Do we need separate motions for the, uh?
No, it's just one, it, it's one item.
No, I'm looking at consider appointment of council member.
That is a separate.
That is separate.
That is a separate issue, or at least. So I didn't, I dealt, well, I, I didn't see it as the same number, I was thinking there was another number attached to that, is.
Let's do this motion?
Yeah, okay, and then, and then just deal with that and then go forward.
We'll do that, and then we'll pick it back up. We probably should open up for a public comment on that one.
Yes, I think that's appropriate. So, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, nay. Any, any abstentions, also, nay. So passes unanimously, and with that, I would like the council to consider the appointment of Councilmember Andy Merrill to the Commission on Homelessness, and consider the appointment of Councilmember Suzanne Cruz to the Economic Development Committee with Mayor Pro-Tim Sigurdstrom as the alternate for the Economic Development Committee.
So, Mr. Mayor, would you explain to the public, um, the Commission on Homelessness and the Economic Development Committee? Would you defer that to city staff?
I think I will ask for staff to, so, the appointments and the reasons for therefore would, would be great.
Um, so Tracy, so you get employee of the month award right now?
Yes.
Okay, so pop quiz, um, the Commission on Homelessness, the Toowomee County Board of Supervisors Identified Community, Family and Health is their second priority in twenty twenty-one. Sept- the second objective is to address emergency needs in homeless communities and collaborate with the public and private partnerships to combat homelessness. Um, the initial formation identified two members of the city council. That has recently been modified by the Toowomee County Board of Supervisors. We now have one position on the Commission on Homelessness. The Central Sierra Economic Development, um, Committee partners with local economy, economic development offices to bring workforce and economic development assistance to businesses and residents throughout the Motherlode region. Um, initially, the council had appointed Anne Sagertrom as the primary, with Suzanne Cruz as the alternate. Upon modification to the Commission on Homelessness, uh, reevaluation of the council members was required, at which point the mayor decided that based on allocation of positions, he wanted to promote equity and give council members adequate roles on the committees. Therefore, it was recommended that Anne take an alternate seat, um, and Suzanne be moved to the Economic Development Committee, um, given the position on the homelessness task force had been eliminated. And that is what the committees are and why we are moving things about tonight.
Thank you very much. I'm sure that you had all of those details memorized when you were mayor.
I, I tried, but, so the Economic Development Committee would, is working with the county, correct?
So it is work, the SBC.
The five counties, okay, okay.
Sierra Business Council, if I recall.
Yes.
And it is important and interests, actually, several of our most engaged members of the council. And I would like to thank all of the council members for their indulgence in this switching around, because it was not without a little bit of awkwardness, so. Guess that brings us to public comment, unless there is any further council discussion? Nope. Okay, public comment from Zoom? Not seeing any public comment from the chamber. Also not seeing any, I will bring it back to the council and ask for a motion. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. All abstaining, abstain. So. That brings us to monthly reports, and nobody thought we'd get out of here before nine. So. I would like to start with our fire chief, Amy New.
Great.
Thank you very much. Administrator's Administrative Services Director, Mr. Gorski. Mrs. Kellogg, anything further from ec-? Uh, well, we have enjoyed your presence this evening enormously.
Rochelle's getting stuff done.
Yes, she is.
The, I want to let you guys know and the public know that due to ongoing vandalism to our public restrooms, we are closing the public restrooms, um, for a period of time. Uh, unfortunately, we just opened the Woods Creek bathrooms up, and so now they're getting closed again, so. Um, and then we will gauge it and try again, but I did want to let the public know, um, that we, um, But I did want to let the public know that we, we've just had a lot of vandalism. Also, I wanted to let you guys know that we did some switching around through our consulting services and we are going to have a code enforcement officer. In fact, her first week was last week. She'll be here one day a week. And we have 17 active code enforcement cases in community development. It's been kind of a nightmare we've been working. Amy's been pulling her hair out. She's probably the most aggressive. I mean, I haven't been in the background. She's been working really hard on a lot of this stuff. So this will be good for, for the city. We've got something, health and sa, major health and safety issues that we've got to address. So we will be on that. We've been working with Doug's office to approve some of the forms that she's used to using in other areas. And this is strictly community development related. So this will be your planning, but really not planning. It's more building codes, fire codes, those types of issues that basically we've, some have been running amok. So we've got to do some reining in. The other thing I want to let you know that you guys already know is that Kim's retiring. Her last day will be October eighth or seventh. So the Friday, October seventh. She's actually gone all next week. So Edith from our, also from CSG, our consulting firm, they've been gracious to work with us on having a staff person. So she'll be here part-time. And then sometimes it'll just be me. So the Community Development Department will be closed to the public on Friday because it will always be me only on Friday. So, so we, I'll be working in the background, but, but we're going to go ahead and close for all of Fridays and I'll just be here by myself until we can get a staff person on. And I know Tracy's working hard on it. So, and then, but we all know how long recruitment and replacement takes. So, you know, but we got Edith in the meantime and she's good and she's learning and she's in, she's a go-getter and she'll be a big help. So anyway, just want to let you guys know what's going on.
Thank you, Director Kellogg. Chief Vanderwheel for police, is there anything further? It looks like there is. Good. You're going to suggest some?
I just want to announce that a little over a week ago, received, we received our two police explorers. Those of you who might.
Cars, cars, not the, not the kinds who are going to set up.
We, well, we order, you know, we order volunteers from now and then. And.
Cars are cheaper.
Get those off. No, yeah, I'm sorry. Police explorer vehicles. These were from a grant brought before council in January of 2021. So it was nice to see them finally roll in. We got a few bugs to adjust with them before you'll see them out on the street, but look for them. You can't miss them. They look really nice. So we're just happy to have them.
Thank you very much, Chief Vanderwheel. Councilwoman White, you, I, why don't you introduce your protege?
Okay.
It seems, since I've forgotten her name, which, for which I apologize, but it seemed appropriate last time you brought someone along, I felt, you know, awful in a way, at least remiss.
You don't have to feel awful.
Well, okay. Wasn't very awful, but I did feel remiss.
Now she's in the spotlight.
In the spotlight and not red or blushing at all. No, so Juliet Vaughn has been with the firm for some time. She's a UC Davis Law School grad. And she, she's law clerked for us. She took the bar in July and gets her results basically a week before November. So think good thoughts for her. But she's, she's out here and she's just kind of going out with me and Nubia and the group to kind of go meet the clients and get a good lay of the land. And we expect that come November, we will see her back here as a full-fledged attorney and not just a law clerk and look forward to serving you guys for several years.
Thank you for the introduction. Thank you for visiting, Ms. Vaughn. City Clerk. We have something from you. We're looking forward to it with bated breath.
I just wanted to mention that the Topeka County Public Health Department will be offering a free flu vaccination clinic for ages two and up on Wednesday, October 12th, from nine to four at the Motherlode Fairgrounds, Manzanita Building. And they also have a free in-house clinic offering flu shots every Tuesday from eight thirty to eleven thirty by appointment only, starting October 18th.
Thank you very much.
Nothing new to report.
Boy, jumping ahead of me. So, Councilman Merrill.
And for the sake of brevity, the only meeting that I was attending since our previous council meeting was the Topeka County Commission on Homelessness. We formed an ad hoc committee to increase public outreach, to inform the general public of what it is we're trying to do, some of the steps we're taking to solve the problem. I, I brought up the concept of building trust between individuals, building trust between an individual and our local government. And I would say probably most importantly, building trust between our community and our government, the, the larger group of us. We're trying to move forward at speed. There's been a lot of discussion on the proposed Jamestown Pallet Shelter. Apparently, the Jamestown Sanitation District is very much open to dealing with water and sewage issues. There's money in the pipeline for initial infrastructure allegedly. And just wanted to bring up that November, I mean, I guess it's a month away, but close enough, will be homelessness month for the month of November. So, yeah, just something to keep in mind. Oh, and also just a fact I learned at the last meeting, there's a lot of discussion of like homeless people coming from outside of the county or like people dumping people here. And I, I can't remember the exact source, but one of our experts on the commission provided the fact that 90% of surveyed homeless and unsheltered individuals actually became homeless or unhoused in the county in which they, they already lived in. So just to emphasize that, you know, these are our community members and they're just as much of, you know, deserving of compassion and our, our help as anyone else.
The one that I paid close attention to actually, at that point, that was four years ago, where they had, it was Sonora Area Foundation founded, or funded the time and place count in there. And I think it was a little wider ranging than just the state or federally mandated one. At that point, forty, fifty-two percent of the respondents or the homeless were local to the area and forty-eight were from somewhere else outside the county. So either it's a change in demographic or just different pit counts give us different numbers. But so. Councilwoman, oh.
Are we, are we going to, are we going to do communications?
We are doing communications, actually.
Oh, we're doing them after the other reports? Okay.
We have received the monthly reports already, I believe.
So, so all the agenda is communication. And I have identified just some information for the council to be aware of. And I think the, among them is the letter of support I wrote for Technical Assistance Grant Program to support county and broadband environmental impact report work. And then also Chris has provided for you our fact sheets on Measure Y. And so if there's any questions on those two items, I would be happy to answer them, but those two items are just informational.
Right. And we, we had all those in our packet. So.
So thank you.
Is there any plan to distribute the, the Measure, Measure Y fact sheets to the public or any access for them to have other than through the city council members or through the website?
So absolutely. Staff is invited to do education and information sharing. I've been invited to, I believe, three meetings so far as the mayor has, in addition to radio interviews, that those are the talking points that we will be speaking from. So I would encourage all of the council members, as you go out and are engaging the community, that you utilize that information. I would also recommend you take a look at the city website. Chris has also updated that with additional information, including our financial scenario planning, as well as the frequently asked questions. So I would absolutely encourage you to share this information with the public. We have probably a hundred copies in City Hall. And as I mentioned, I'll be taking those out to meetings as invited.
Right.
And so there was, Doug, there were some limitations on what we can do where we are limited in representing the city, but as individuals we can go out. And this is where I think that for all of us, it would behoove us to try and engage in speaking venues where people are willing to listen to us and where we might have a natural invitation anyway, community clubs and that type of thing, where it's not formally organized by us, but where we are endeavoring to do it on our own. Is that a correct approach, sir?
Yeah, so, so just as a reminder, I mean, council members are allowed to go out and provide educational inform, information to anybody in their capacity as a council member. It has to present both sides. It has to be factual in nature and it's not advocacy in and of itself. That being said, you in your individual capacities, not as a functioning member of the council member, can actually go out and do more advocacy related work if you, if you want to. So again, I, I think the biggest distinction is when you've got your council member hat on, you're providing, you know, neutral information and, and facts, obviously with the understanding that we put this on the ballot. So obviously the council's supportive of it. But at the same time, when you switch over and are kind of more asking people directly for votes and things of that nature, that would need to be done in your private capacity.
Which is tricky. For council people. And I think that some of this is conceived for different situations or. Councilwoman Cruz.
Yes, I agree that in the interest of brevity, I've been to several meetings, Vision Sonora. We reviewed Overpass Designs. The Visitors Bureau is ramping up for a Marketing of the West Conference. And the Yes Partnership, I would say that was a long meeting, but one thing I was super excited about was this new website called Unites.com. And it's a place where you can find any social services, services that you want. So if you've ever walked into a doctor's office and you see brochures for addiction, mental health, housing, utility help, and there's just brochures everywhere, this actually gets rid of all that. And you go to Unites.com and find out any service you want in the county. And then lastly, I would like to say that did you know this week is Constitution Week? So between September 17th and 23rd, this time is recognized by the United States Constitution Institution and it encourages Americans to reflect on the rights and responsibilities of citizenship and what it means to be a United States citizen.
Thank you very much. Councilman Hawkins.
I've attended a few meetings. Honestly, right now I'm so tired, I don't remember what they are. But I just want to thank the public for allowing me to continue to serve and be here. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you very much, sir. Mayor Protem Sigurdstrom.
Most of what I have done was in, was at the remainder of August before our canceled first meeting, but Andy and I both went to the T-Stan Irwin meeting. He was there. I was virtual and that I'm looking forward to learning more about county water, our, our watershed management. And we did, I did meet with Melissa and Rochelle about revising the sign ordinance. I'm sure that'll be coming up. Did a Cal Cities Disaster Preparedness Roundtable, which always makes me envious of larger cities with bigger budgets. And I had a little preview of the homeless camp or the new homeless navigation site. Is that what it's going to be outside of Jamestown?
No, that's going to be the pallet shelter.
Okay. The pallet shelter with, with Ryan and Tracy. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to go down and, and tour it. And then Tracy shared, shared with me some of the Vision Sonora designs. They're very, they're fun and really wonderfully representative. I was very pleased with the outcome.
Thank you very much. And it's nice to have you back in the county.
Oh, thank you. It's nice to be back. My cat was happy.
I bet. So, well, I would like to briefly thank all of the council members for taking up the slack while I've been away on fire projects. And, and for the staff's great response to our fire threats that we've had. The, so I was away when it happened and still felt that the city was actually doing just fine, that my absent wasn't going, my absence wasn't going to change a thing. And it's really nice having that much confidence in our staff and their abilities. So with that, I wish everybody a great evening. And I didn't, we didn't quite make nine o'clock, but it's pretty close.